First, and then we'll have John Jones open up his meeting and then we'll go from there. So, do you have a, do you have a, um?
Oh, agenda.
That's okay. If we don't have it, if you can pop one up on the screen, I can just read it from the screen.
I'll get one, see one right here.
One minute, guys. I don't think Austin was expecting me to be here, so.
Hey, John, what, what you got? I need you to get started. Um, can you hear me, John?
We're good.
Yes, I hear you.
I, I wanted to mention to you, if you could mention it to your board, I do have Tristan on the, the line who is our civil engineer and had four questions for him. But he's doing this voluntarily, so he doesn't have a lot of time, so I've only earmarked about twenty minutes with him, so. Y'all got questions for the civil engineer, rather go ahead and get those to drink pretty quickly in the beginning.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and open up the meeting. I'm gonna call the village council and planning boards' joint special meeting today, Wednesday, February 3rd, two thousand twenty-one. I showed the time to be six thirty-four, and it also looks like we have quarts on both ends. So I'll go ahead and open up my, our meeting, and then, John, I'll turn it over to you, and then we'll allow everyone to participate, make a motion for everyone to participate remotely. Go ahead, John.
Oh, okay, that was an official opening. All right, uh, I'd like to call this, uh, meeting of the Newtown Village Planning Board, um, to, to open. We have a full form of all members present, all, uh, remote, yeah, but, um, we're going ahead.
Okay, I'll, I'd like to make a motion for our council to be able to participate remotely. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. John, you wanna do the same?
Yeah, to make a motion, if the planning board is authorized for, to participate remotely, um, uh, turn. Aye.
Okay, it looks like we have an idea.
We, we, we all, we all participate by raising hands. It seems to be easier and quicker, since everybody can see each other.
And John, you need a second for that?
Uh, aye.
Who was it?
Uh, Melinda's second.
Okay.
Do we need to vote again, Austin?
No, you're, well, yes, yes, you do, actually, but. You're good. Okay, we're good there. So then, uh, next up on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Assume we don't have any additions or changes, so we need a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
So move.
All's, all's, who was that?
Needed on, need a motion for, on both ends, so one for, one for council, one for planning board.
Okay, so that's, that's my motion. I don't know, we have to do two separate motions each time? Okay, so that's for the council, I made a motion, so council, can you, uh, approve that motion?
Aye. So now.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and all the planning board?
Aye. Uh, planning board, I, I'd love to make question be approved of the agenda as stated. Any, all in favor?
And they, and who's my second? Okay, Kelly?
I'm second.
Okay, and then, uh, just to ask you, since we're most, all of us, just go ahead and, and I don't know if you are or not, I can't tell, but mostly if you could mute while you're not speaking, that'd be great, just for background noise. Um, so first up on the agenda, perform, perform the function of the design review board to discuss and consider approval of the village hall project located in a corner of Newtown Road and Marvin School Road, site plans, building plans, and landscape plans. So we'll open it up, I, I think you guys had asked us, John, to have this meeting, so we're all ears and, uh, waiting to hear what you got.
Okay, uh, let me ask, I guess, Austin, do we have the current plans? I know there were some modifications after the, uh, the, uh, council meeting the other day. Do we have current plans that you can pull up?
Yeah, we, we have things available to on the screen, so.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll share my screen in just a second.
Aye.
And, uh, show you all the, uh, current plans. Uh, there's been a good bit of evolution since the last time planning board discussed this, uh, so a lot of the changes that, uh, were requested were taken into account. Um, can everyone see my screen all right?
Yes, right, right ahead, your, your voice is a little quiet.
Um, okay, how about now?
About the same.
The same, okay. Um, all right, and I'll just start, I'll just, I'll just talk really loudly, how's that?
Not a lot.
Okay, all right. So what was requested in the last, uh, the preliminary review was that, uh, the building was rotated so that the lobbies would face the parking lot, that there would be ramps, and that those handicapped accessible ramps, uh, handicapped parking spots, sorry, would be closest to the locations of the front of the ramp. So, as you can see, those changes are made here, I'll try to annotate, and, uh, before I get, you know, get too far into, you know, cutting into the time, I do want to mention that we do have our engineer, uh, Tristan, uh, McMahon is here, and that, uh, um, in a second, I will, I guess, stop screen sharing so that, uh, we can talk about giving him consensus, consent, getting consensus for him to, um, speak at the table. Um, in fact, let me just do that now, I'm gonna stop sharing, and I would like, uh, to ask, uh, both boards, uh, for consensus, I don't think we need to do it separately because it's just consensus, just like a show of hands, until, allow Tristan to speak, um, at the table. Okay, I think that's everyone. Thanks. Um, okay, I'll go back to sharing then. Um, okay, so some of the other changes were that the generator and AC units were, uh, located in the, what I guess I would call back corner there that I circled in ink, and, um, that's, that's roughly it, I think. Uh, does anyone have any questions about that?
Yeah, hello, hey, aren't we, uh, gonna have, uh, the trash come out there as well?
Uh, yes, yes, we did mention that. The trash could be located here as well, I don't think, they just didn't draw it on the, uh, uh, the mechanical diagram.
Form.
Will that be screened?
Yes, let me pull out the, uh, the rendering here. Okay, so can you, uh, here's the side view rendering. Uh, I'm sorry, I feel like someone was talking, someone, I was like.
Uh, this is, uh, I was gonna throw out, fuck, the, uh, uh, equal, box out, and then say, I'm sorry.
Hey, John, 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 can I stop you? We're getting like every third or fourth word, you're cutting up really bad. On this end here, I don't know if you guys are all experiencing that or not, but we get every fourth word from you.
All right, uh, 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 now.
It's still doing it.
I've had a problem, yeah, so, um.
Yeah, John, you're buffering, you can see like your, your video stops and you freeze and, and then, I guess that must be happening, just so you.
I think that's on John's, uh, John, if you could turn off your video, that would help.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good. Now, if you wanna start talking, we'll let you know, or I'll interrupt. Go ahead.
All right, let me try again. Can you hear, is my sound better?
Yes.
Okay, it, it, as I, as I was trying to say, for the benefit of the planning board, I was, you know, in attendance, but, you know, remotely on the council meeting, and it had been some changes to what the planning board had seen. They, they had flipped the building and made several other changes, but, you know, one thing that was new on there was they were showing the generator on the outside corner of the building, and it was brought up that often be away from Newtown Road, and then this conversation's got into trash, you know, a trash enclosure and air conditioners and stuff, and so that's, that's what brought this part of, drove this conversation up. So I'll, I'll mute again now.
Thank you.
Ruge, can we go back to the elevation, please, the front elevation? Sure.
Are, yeah, are some vents displayed on the wrong side?
I, I did not hear anything that after John hung up.
Okay, Kim, basically, he was going over what we talked about in our, uh, um, around, uh, work session meeting where that corner, far corners are coming in.
Now, I heard, I heard John, but somebody said something after John stopped talking. I feel like it was Michael.
He was asking to pull up this.
Yeah, he, he was that, asking to pull up the elevations, that was Michael about asking to pull up the elevations, and just keep in mind, guys, as we are here, we only have about ten to fifteen more minutes with Tristan, who's available, so if we have questions for them, uh, make sure that's at the forefront of our discussion here.
So my question immediately would be, are we having the screen in trash in the front of the building? Why does that have to be in the front? Why can't that be in the back? Because the back would be facing the highway?
Well, well, one of my, I, I'll, I'll start, Michael. Um, one of my suggestions was, if you, if you drive over by Starbucks right now, the back of the building, they don't have any screening for the trash, and, and, and that, to a lot of people, is really the front of the building, because you're driving by and you see Starbucks. So, we were trying to put all of the utility stuff in one area that could be discreetly kinda put away where you don't really see it, and, uh, whether from the street or you'd have to pull in all the way to the end of the, the parking lot and, and come in from that way to maybe identify that there is a thing. That's, that's kind of the, where it made most sense for us, because we didn't want it to be viewed from the street.
It looks like it's just, it looks like it's on the wrong side.
So I'm looking at two elevations, I'm seeing the, on the screen here, the right side elevation and the, and the front street side elevation, and I'm showing two different screens of, is it the same thing?
Yeah, I think there is.
It is.
There's great.
The fiction is, is off. The side, uh, the side shot should be correct.
Uh, just for clarity sake, for cl- clarity sake, the, the, the front and the back, the front should be considered the parking lot side, the back should be considered the Newtown Road side. Is that correct, right now?
Yeah, that's correct. Sorry, if you don't mind if I interject here real quick, Ruge. Uh, so what you're seeing on the bottom is when you get out of your car and you're in the parking lot, that is the facade that faces the parking lot. So if you look at the plan view, that does line up with basically the generator and the HVAC units being screened on that northwest corner of the building, and then on the top one, that is basically, you're standing where the screen buffer is, looking towards the building, and that's what you would see on that side, but that did not be very visible from the street, because it's tucked into that corner away from the road.
What type of screen are you using, Tristan? Is that, it looks like a chain link fence, what, what are we?
No, that is, sorry, I apologize, we shaded it back a little bit, so you could see better what was back there. Um, the materials, I think, were being decided, but it would be something that would complement the building facade. Uh, I was thinking some sort of like, um, white fencing, maybe with some sort of decorative lattice or something across the top, a bit more ornamental. Definitely, chain link was not really in our mind, but if it needs to be for budget reasons, we could always do that, but I think the intent would be to have something consistent with the architecture.
But, but Tristan.
Okay, so that, when we blow it up, I see better, but I guess my question is, what you've done is you've shaded it to see what's behind it, but that's not really what you're gonna see.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Tristan, real quick, if, if we were, are you saying that if we were to put it on the northwest side, or if you're looking at the building, the front of the building from the parking lot, and put it on the opposite side of what we're saying, would that be viewed more? I mean, what, in your opinion, what, from, driving by and stuff, I just don't wanna get in a situation where we're looking at garbage cans, regardless of what side we're on, which becomes difficult, but putting it on the right side, is it gonna be that far tucked in, it's gonna be hard to see?
I think so, yeah, because, to be honest, I mean, that's the side of the building that's furthest away from the road, from, um, Newtown Road, and it's also, it will be screened around that corner, so it kinda tucks into the building corner right there.
Okay.
Um, so I think as far as strategically, where it would be least visible, where it is shown in that plan view right there, I think it's probably just about the best bet.
And then, you know, the subdivision that's to the north and west of y'all, they're gonna have a pretty substantial wooded buffer,
um, separating you from their development as well, which will also help.
Right, okay. We, we, we talked about it, we thought that was the best location, and Michael, I see your point, but I still think that's the better location. It's just a matter of how we're screening it.
Can I ask a different question? If, if you've got trash literally bumping up, or even regardless of whether it's screened, you've got trash bumping up against an entrance, so like you walk up onto the porch, immediately to your right, have trash cans and generators, so if that's the main entrance, do we really want people smelling trash and hearing the generator and the AC units? If there're gonna be conversations happening on the porch and people gathering, I mean, just from a, just from a citizen standpoint, I wouldn't wanna be on the porch smelling, oh, it's garbage from yesterday. Oh, it smells delicious.
Well, the smell, I can't talk to a lot, because I don't know what sort of waste typically generated here, I can't imagine, if we've got whole lot food waste, it's probably more paper products.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of the generator, that would only run in the event that you lose power. So, um, that you shouldn't hear unless, you know, that whole area has lost power, then it will kick on to supply that with the emergency systems for the building.
Right. Um. It comes out, it's, it's scheduled to come on once a week for testing, it's usually a ten-minute test, that they, they have a battery, a separate battery to it, and it'll run, and usually they schedule that for a Saturday when no one's there, and it just runs and, and takes care of itself. And garbage, I'm not too concerned about, because I agree with Tristan, it's probably gonna be more paper products than, than household waste, if you will.
Any, uh, other questions on this plan from anybody?
Uh, Tristan, were you able to, uh, superimpose a site plan on like a Google Earth yet, or is that not possible?
Uh, if you're thinking like a three D model, no, we don't have that ability right now to do that, really. I guess what is, what are you wanting to see there, Michael? What do you?
Well, I, I, I mean, I'd like to see the street view of what happens, because this is go, this is a, uh, traffic circle, and it's a cornered lot. I'm just curious as to how it, how it lays out in real time, you know, on the, I mean, if you superimpose a site plan on it, you can get a better understanding of how that, how that building faces exactly to the street. That's all.
Thinking, Ruge, can you go to the Newtown Road elevations now for everybody?
To your point, Michael, as you're coming in that, say you're coming from Crane Road into that circle, you're almost looking at more of the side of the building than you, the way it's positioned now, in all fairness, you're looking at more of the side of the building than the front, because the front, or, excuse me, I'm gonna call it the back, because it's now the, technically, the back. The side that faces Newtown Road is gonna be more parallel with Newtown Road than be catty-cornered on the corner, and that was, our understanding was done because of, uh, the cost of, uh, um, uh, for drainage and stuff like that, and Tristan, you can probably get, talk more about that issue.
Yeah, so you hit the man right on the head. Um, basically, because of the area that this is located in, the watershed it's located in, if the disturbance goes over one acre, um, because it's under the district rules, then you would have to provide stormwater detention and water quality basins for the site, in order to make this as compact as possible. And right now, the site plan that, um, was up just a minute ago, we're estimating it's right around forty-one thousand, forty-two thousand square feet of disturbance, one acre being forty-three thousand, uh, five sixty, so we're just under that threshold. And initially, we had the building more candid, that was basically, that was working against us, because we had to go out around the corner of the building, and then still come back to grade the parking lot and everything and get that to work. So to make this a little bit more compact, under that one acre threshold, the building was reoriented, basically, to be parallel to, um, Marvin School Road, and it's, as opposed to kind of turning it into the traffic circle.
You mean more, more, more parallel to Newtown, not Marvin, right?
Yes, sorry, I missed focus.
Yeah, okay. So you kinda see, as you come into that circle from Crane Road, you're kinda looking at the corner of the building, which, you know, uh, it's, it's, it's a tough call, I'm like, I, I'd love to see it kinda cap, just straight on, you're looking at it, and then, you know, but it, it is what it is based on how everything worked out and what we were told as far as cost and.
Joe, if you're, if you're, if you turn it the way that it originally was, facing the traffic circle, and you're coming down Newtown from Marvin Road, and you look at the side of the building in that direction.
I, I agree.
In any direction that, where Marvin lives.
Yeah. I, I agree, it's just, it's, you know, I, I, I just like it better that way, that he has it marked than I do, but then again, I'm not a big fan of this location anyways, but that's another story, so we're staying with this.
The other thing too, Ruge, um, do you have the landscape plan off, that you could pull up too? Because one thing I just wanna, um, mention as well, and you all may have seen this already, but there is a decent amount of foundation landscaping for this building, and I know the architect is treating the facades really as two truck facades, with materials and the detailing. They're trying to keep it as similar as possible between the two facades, and then, as you can see here, there's a decent amount of foundation landscaping as well, to make it different from all angles.
Okay.
Did you change it? Is Ruge there? Fuller?
Couldn't hear what he said.
Yeah, yeah, I changed it to the landscape plan.
Okay, mine is still on the other one.
That's.
The site plan, no, well, the landscape plan is just the site plan with, uh, plants drawn on it.
There's no, I don't have any plants online.
Yeah, we're seeing it here, Kim.
It's still a black and white drawing.
It's a black.
I've got it here too, it just shows, uh, symbols for plants, Kelly.
Yeah, like.
It's, it's not colored like you'd like it to be.
I, I promise, I, I promise you guys, what I'm looking at on my computer is not the landscape plan, because I'm looking at the landscape plan on my phone.
Okay. Well, it's a black and white.
Didn't see what Ethan drew on there?
No, I do not see anything that Ruge drew on my computer. I promise it's not the same thing.
Well, you're the only one who can, Tim, I think you're, Tim, I think you're anomaly here, because they're all shut, maybe, it might be on your end.
I'm looking at it on my phone, so just continue.
Okay.
Your phone's, uh, Cisco, something, because we're all seeing it.
Yeah, I told you, you shouldn't use a track phone, get a regular popcorn.
Tough crowd.
Eighteen, sorry.
Come on now, come on now.
I thought, I know, all except on computer, now, Bill and Marvin are starting to, and it's a black screen. It's fine, keep going.
Okay. We'll, we'll keep going, we're, we all see, I think, the same thing, so we're gonna keep going, if that's okay, Kim. So, thank you. Um.
All right, uh, planning board, I guess, any questions from your part to this?
I have a question.
Okay, uh, Kelly?
Um, it just looks like the la, the, the land lays, in a way where there's not a gully, but the land kind of dips down to a lower elevation, and the building is not at a higher elevation, so it looks like there's gonna be water drainage issues. Can you talk about the drainage solutions?
Correct, you're right, it is down in a low, flat area. I've been to the site multiple times now, so essentially, what's probably gonna have to happen is, um, what's coming from Newtown Road, the roadway drainage itself has now picked up, that broke the ditch that goes around the Crane Park Circle, but you still have kind of the, um, mound, I don't really wanna call it a mound, but the top of the hill there, the top of the parcel next to Newtown Road is all sheet draining toward the building. So what we're probably gonna end up doing to handle that is grade in a couple of swales, one of them go around to the plan north that you see here, and discharge onto the slope that goes down the stream. The other one will head towards the, um, existing riprap dip along Marvin School Road and drain there. Depending, it make it a little flat in some areas between the building and the parking lot, so there may have to be some small, like atrium, little like eighteen inch diameter domed, graded structures that are hidden in the landscaping that are used as drains that, that then would get piped over to probably, uh, the screen buffer type area and discharge in that location.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And as far as disturbance on, on trees, I know, are, are we disturbing a lot with this plan right now?
Um, not nearly as much as the old plan was. Basically, the existing trees shown around the building for the most part should be able to be retained. Um, there's a few there that are close to the walk, um, and where Ruge hit through the base of the arrow pointing north, there's two trees just to the right of that one. Um, or to the left of that one right there, there's a couple of trees that would probably be impacted by the swell. And then if you go up where the HVAC and the generator units are directly across from them, there's a couple of trees, yep, right there. Um, I can't guarantee those will be able to be saved if we're trying to grade the stormwater, but we'll do everything we can to minimize impacts in that areas.
And I think, uh, just for purposes of, uh, the, um, planning board, that we basically took, correct me if I'm wrong, the guts inside and flipped everything, so e- everything on the inside has been reversed, so when you're walking in, you're going to the reception, um, I, I wasn't clear.
It's just been rotated.
It's just been completely rotated.
Yep.
So, I, I think we've answered that issue there. Um, any other issues, concerns for Tristan, there were, since we have him here, and he's probably only got a few minutes left?
Ruge, I think last, last week, you were able to get both the Newtown Road's, uh, elevation and the parking lot elevation, uh, split screen or something, weren't you? Can you do that even for the board, or planning board?
It, it did take a minute. Um, I do, I do wanna say that I think, uh, looking at this picture, and although the text down here says front street side, like that is actually, um, the generator is, the corral is going in the back parking lot side. Um, but yeah, I will, uh, give me, give me one second, I wanna stop screen sharing, set it up, and then start screen sharing again.
Okay.
Thanks. Tristan, while he's working on that, can we relay the names of those, um, elevations, so it's a little less confusing when we have?
Well, we can, um, that is actually the front facade on the bottom, it just isn't facing the street anymore, it's facing the parking lot, but we can, we can change that.
Yeah, just maybe parking lot side, do some research on that or something, and then, so can you speak real fast in terms of the hollies? Were they able to be removed, or handled, as requested?
Um, so some of them were, so when the landscape plan comes back up, there's, there's a couple of different layers of landscaping for the parking lot, basically. You've got the screening shrubs, and then you've got the twenty-five foot, um, screen buffer. So I think the question was, hey, it looks like we're duplicating shrubs here, so what we did on that landscape plan is we kept the shrubs immediately adjacent to the parking lot, figuring those would provide the most screen for cars, and then left trees in buffer area, so like got rid of the, um, hollies from the buffer. Because from there, further back they are from the cars, the more likely you are to see over them to the front of vehicles.
And that still meets the ordinance, correct?
I believe so, yeah. Yeah, you can see right here, so on this plan right here, there's a road hollies next to the property line, and then they stop right about where the parking lot shrubs kinda curve around the landscape island, and then hug the parking lot. Whereas before, the hollies used to kind of follow the property line, and we're doing double vision there.
Well, that was way, that completely goes against what I was trying to do. I want those hollies away from the curb, because they're gonna be shaded out, they're gonna be ugly, there's gonna be mulch in the parking lot. Uh, we were trying to get the screening on the property line to screen it so you couldn't see it, but not have bushes right up against people's grills on their car. Um, I, yeah, I've done landscaping for thirty years, and as the trees mature, and they start shading, we're gonna start shading out the hollies, and they're gonna really look terrible. So I was trying to get, to, rid of those along the curb and, and keep the, the screening towards the back, where it can. where it can really fill in and be a really good screen.
Yeah, you can do it that way. Um, sorry, I misunderstood the intent there. Um, what I was trying to achieve was keeping it closer to screen in the front at initial install. I think if we flip it and go the other way, um, we'll have to utilize some larger material, um, whether it's something like Nelly Stevens or something like that. Because my fear is if you put something like Wolf Burfords next to the property line, you know, they're gonna be 30 inches tall when they're installed. You're gonna see right over them versus putting some larger, you know, Nelly Stevens out there that are six foot tall or something at install. I think would be a much more effective screen. So as long as y'all are open to that, we could definitely do something of that nature to screen and then just eliminate the hollies next to the parking.
What about instead of annowings? Um, because they, they would have to be kind of big. What about, um, uh, um...
I think there's junipers and stuff you can use. There's like Green Giant, there's other options.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, the Green Giant or an apple green, Arvita or something that could be used in there that would, uh, I think probably be better, actually. Uh, it's a little more dense than the Nellies. Probably do more sound barrier as well as sight barrier.
And I think they're a little bit more cost effective than the Nelly Stevens as well.
Is that something that can be kind of discussed later?
I have a question about the landscaping. Um, it, from the color rendering that I saw, what was up against the building looked really lovely. Um, I, plants and I don't get along, so, um, will those need to be maintained? You know, like, you know, you see what at entrances, like there'll be people out there like switching out during the season, switching out plants. Is it pretty much like what's there will grow? It'll be little maintenance or swapping out?
Yeah, so most of what has been specified here is pretty hardy, um, very low maintenance. Um, I probably would recommend some sort of drip irrigation system for a lot of it, just to maintain it. And then there are areas where we can do, um, right now, it's just identified as seasonal color or perennial brown covers. So it could be something as simple as mondo grass. And then you can have some areas, for example, right by the front porch when you're coming in, flanking the walk. Maybe you have some annual beds that get changed out a few times a year, you know, for a little bit more visual interest. But the rest of it, you pretty much leave it alone and most of it's evergreen. Um, and we try to play out the texture and color component so that you get a nice variety and it doesn't seem too draft, I guess I would say.
Yeah, it does look nice.
Kelly, sound went out. We're muted, we're muted. Kelly's sound went out there. We did not hear the last thing that she said.
You guys get that, Kelly? We, we heard you, you liked something and then all of a sudden you went quiet.
Still cannot hear.
Still can't hear you. Kelly, are you speaking?
Guys, I can hear fine. I can hear just fine. I heard every word, so I think the problem's under there.
Yes, I can hear fine too, so.
So I can hear all of you, I just can't hear Kelly. That's weird, so.
Okay, sorry.
We got you back now.
Okay, sorry. I think my AirPods were dying. Um, what I said was if, if they're going to need to be perennials or seasonal plants that are switched out, you know, do you guys already have, does the council already have lines in the budget for plants and maintenance of, of those plants moving forward once this building is finished? We will address that in our budget. Thank you, there.
And just a note, uh, we've already, uh, a long time ago discussed irrigation, um, possibly drilling well, um, for irrigation purposes, which would also be able to benefit the, the traffic circles as well as Village Home. So that we'll be able to have drip irrigation in there.
And full disclosure, I did not major in horticulture, so I, I need pictures and stuff like that. So I'll trust the experts on that to, uh, do the right screening and the right maintenance, all that kind of stuff, so. That's just me, though. Opinion of one. I trust you, Andrew.
We're fortunate to have someone that knows what he's talking about, because I'm with you, Joe, I don't know anything.
I just want to be on the record, not agreeing to anything. I'm just gonna let the, uh, the expert speak on this and if you show me pictures of what it looks like or something that's mature, then I can get my head around that, so.
You trust their judgment.
Are there any more questions for Tristan?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, try to move this forward. You taught me, on behalf of me, Christina. Uh, Rohit had the two elevations up there. They were not the ones I was thinking of that were up last week, but, uh, hopefully you can see that both Newtown Road and Parking Lot Side will, will both be a, a, uh, a good presentation for the village, I think. Do we need to get in, are we prepared, uh, someone to get into materials and colors and stuff? Do we need to do that?
Could I ask one question about the handicap spaces before we do that? If we can pull that up and the ramps?
And also, I had to move away from landscaping. It sounds like there may need to be some changes made from what was presented to the DRB. So that needs to be clarified so they completely understand what it is that they're taking a vote on.
So, so will, if, if we vote on the landscape plan, will it be subject to, uh, a representation of some the far parking lot side, I guess, Andy and Tristan, everybody?
I'd rather y'all go ahead and get a draft of what it is if you're trying to get it on, but I'm sorry, my dog is screaming in the background, but, um...
And Michael, someone had, someone had a question on the handicap. Do we want to address that now?
Uh, let's decide where we're gonna go before, as far as landscaping, I guess. If we're trying to wrap it up, you know, in one time instead of multiple times here.
Okay.
Would, I guess I'd have to before Tristan and Andy, to give us something that we can say, yes, we can vote on that.
So, mine, and Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but we will, um, basically we'll intubate the hollies from the north side of the parking lot and instead we will put some sort of large Arvita or other comparable evergreen on the property line next to the subdivision.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. The, the Burfords will go and then we'll replace those with the, on the other side with the, yeah. You got the, you got the gist of it. Yeah, and did everybody keep up with what Andy thought that we should not have those, those plants along the curb line? All right, so in regard to that, anybody understand okay with that part of it right now, I guess? All right, now back to, uh, to Michael and the handicap parking?
Can you pull that up? Okay.
Yeah.
You have to give me one minute. My, uh, computer is being really like slow right now.
Tristan, I guess my question was, um, you know, how close are the spaces to the front door? And then I saw a ramp on both sides of the building. Why did you extend the ramp on the other side of the building?
Um, actually, we didn't do that. I think that was the architect to make it better. So visually, it was nice and even. I can't answer from the computer though. Um, but as far as the proximity of the parking space is to the entrance, they were located at the base of the ramp, because they need to be on the closest acceptable path to the front door. And the front door right now is coming up. That side is gonna have to be elevated a little bit. Because we've got to be able to pick up the building on the other side, where I think Kelly was talking about drainage concerns earlier. So basically, it's gonna be a little bit elevated on the side facing Newtown Road. And then it's going to basically bring you across these on the side back front of the parking lot. So you have a couple of steps down to the grade there to make that work. I'm sorry, did I answer your question adequately?
Yes, that's fine.
Is the reason that you went with a longer ramp just because of the grade? Like I saw, I saw some rendering with a switchback and I was confused about which one is the real ramp?
So there's initially, there might have been a concept markup where we were toying with the idea of having a switchback. And then, um, the latest, most current plan right here is kind of one long ramp that allows the front porch. And again, it's symmetric about the entryway, so you have two of them flanking the porch.
And, um, will it have some type of railing on either side?
It will be required to have a railing, yes. That's, that's part of the building code requirements.
Is there a, are we talking blind iron? Like, like, I mean, since this is a design review board, I'm assuming we probably have to approve that? I'm, I'm not really sure.
Um, detailing, I think, could be worked out as this thing moves through, um, building permits and stuff. I would assume it would want to be something a little bit more decorative, whether it's like aluminum pickup, something of that nature as opposed to a tubular steel handrail, which I think is what you're talking about.
It would probably need to be a handrail. This is, it's not just gonna be wheelchairs going up. This is gonna be people needing to grip on and they'll be putting weight on it. So decorative is nice, but it needs to stand up to, you know, an adult's full weight.
Kelly, that's all code driven. Um, I used to be in that railing business, so like, that's all, there's no, as far as safety, like what you're thinking about, there'll be no like variability there. That'll all be mandated.
Yeah, so I guess, Mark, my question is, since you've done this, is there even a choice of railing? Or is it just in order, you know, for code, it's this railing, that's what you get?
There's a bunch of choices, there's a bunch of price ranges, but all of them will satisfy the safety codes that you're concerned about.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm more talking from a design standpoint, since this is design review, we don't know what they look like.
Yeah, yeah, so there's a wide range, yeah, some my personal knowledge.
So Rohit, oh, he's gone. Um, Austin, is that something that with those not being decided yet, is that gonna keep us from approving this? Or is that something that we don't need to approve? The, the, the look of the railing?
That's a Rohit question, but he's, I see him on the screen.
Did you hear me, Rohit? I know you were kind of hovering.
I was right behind my computer, I did hear you. Um, let me look in the ordinance and get back to you. And it could be something people just telling us out there, but, um, we could say decorative railing providing performance that, you know, give the dimensions and then have the contractor submit chapter arms for village review prior to installation. That may be an option.
Do you have the elevation for those ramps? I know that, um, you know, there's, there's definitely a code requirement for maximum of, um, rise on those ramps. Do you know what that is?
Maximum rise is two and a half feet before you have a landing. And right now, we're shooting for them to keep that, um, porch to about 30 inches or less above the ground so the porch doesn't have that railing.
I'm not sure, do we, I guess, Rohit, do we have to approve? You know, we don't have a full set of quote plans, finished plans just on point. And maybe Paul could even address that as it related to Marvin Gardens way back. Uh, you know, there, there are details that are still to be worked out.
Rohit, there's, there's obviously some questions regarding some of the decorative features that we, you know, haven't planned on as of yet, because we before with the building, um, plans. But, I mean, if there's certain things that we want to itemize out that y'all want to have approval on as far as like decorative fencing or decorative handrails or whatever it might be, if we could just get a list of, of that rolling and have approval on everything else, um, you know, with the condition of them later approving handrails, decorative fencing, that sort of thing.
That's what I sort of suggest. Can we not, you know, approve subject to re-submission of handrails or screening, you know, final screening counts or, you know, et cetera?
Uh, we do have precedent for that where in the Marvin Gardens zoning district, it's, you know, the planning board would have looked at it very carefully, but then there's also provisions for when it comes time to putting up certain signs, uh, they'll come to the planning board again, like, um, we've recently done. So, um, so yes, there is, uh, there is an ability to make a list and say, when you get to the point of knowing what you're gonna do for X, Y, Z features, um, you have to come to the planning board for, um, against bills. We can do that, yes.
So can you start a list of those things that we want to come back to? And unless, signs is one of them, but in order for us to move forward with getting the building plans approved, so we can get quotes, we've, we've got to get involved rolling on everything else? So if we can just start a list of some of the things that come up that we want to have final approval on at a later date, that would be great.
Yeah, Christina, I did start that list. That's, you know, the screening fences, the handicap railing, the signage, uh, and then anything else that comes up that anybody wants to throw out there, I'll put that on this list so that we can summarize it, you know, here at the end. Is that sounding okay with everybody?
Rohit, Rohit, bottom line, what, what needs to be approved tonight? So that we can continue moving this all forward?
The, uh, the three different things, and I think we do need to make three different motions, are the site plan, the building plan, and the landscape plan. So I think we got to a point where we moved on from the landscape plan. Uh, now we're looking at the site plan right now.
Why don't we just, can we just go ahead and either approve or disapprove the landscape plan? Can we just like move one at a time so we at least accomplish?
Yeah.
And can, um, can y'all make some notation about those changes as well that were suggested by Captain Member Wortman?
Wouldn't I just make that note? Wouldn't that stuff?
Wouldn't the landscape plan necessarily change if the site plan were changed?
I'm not sure the site plan is going to change or whoever discussed any changes did, have we?
I think the question is why not make the motion at the end of the meeting?
I'm just saying, if we approve.
It's a good point.
If we, if we approve the landscape plan and we change the site plan, then the landscape plan won't change.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think we can, you know, at the end. So, uh...
We need to let Tristan dial it some way.
I think it goes this the same way they do it. Start the site plan, then the, and the landscape.
So, um, time to move forward. Land, uh, site plan, any other questions on the site plan for the board?
Or for Tristan?
Can we take a look at it and put it up on the screen there? Just so we understand each other? All right, thank you.
Or any other questions for Tristan at this time?
Yeah. Look, it's, it's not being brought up at all, but let me, just for clarification, the, I guess it's technically the fire, fire truck terminal around the area? That's not, that's not asphalt there, it's something else, just for clarification?
Grass. Yeah, so that would be, um, grass paper. There was, uh, you know, the preferred one, I think, are more like a plastic dome that you put, uh, sand on top of. And then you basically pour a concrete band around it. And it looks like grass most of the time, except for Andy, where that hopefully never, a fire truck needs to pull that and then needs to back up and get turned around.
Okay, so that, so, so that will look like grass unless, unless it gets mangled?
Yeah, unless people start using it as a parking spot and start working on it all the time, yes, it could look like grass.
Okay. And questions on that with anybody?
It's grass.
Just one, is there, is that required that we have that? And, and is it required to be where it's located? But is it required that there be one and perhaps not two? Uh, the only reason I'm asking is, my gut reaction is that trucks just might come into the parking lot, kind of realize it's turn, they missed the turnaround. And I'm wondering...
and I'm wondering, wouldn't it make sense to put another one at the other end?
Well, typically, fire code requires that you have a turnaround. If there's a dead end more than a hundred and fifty feet away, we did look at having one on the other end, get the grade start falling down towards the stream. So in order to try to keep that disturbance as tight as we can, and keep it under an acre, we elected to show it where it is now, on a flat spot of the site. So there's less grading needed, but it's still within a hundred and fifty feet of the end of the parking lot. So typically, and it's not really designed for like delivery trucks or anyone to use, it's really designed in the event that a fire truck has to pull up. Based on code, they're not supposed to have to back up more than a hundred and fifty feet before they have that turnaround. And it only requires one, it doesn't necessarily require that you have multiple ones.
And again, it looks like grass, it doesn't look like a turnaround to your average delivery truck driver. They don't want to crack through your yard, yes.
You know, driven by the fire code, sort of driven by.
Where will deliveries go? To the extent there are supplies and things like that that will be delivered, where is that going to be going? The northwest door, the front door, the side, where do you think that goes?
I honestly think if you have like a box truck or somewhere, and they've got to actually roll something off a cart, they're probably going to want to park in the area of the fire truck turnaround, where it's still asphalt, but not on grass. And then they have a little straight-out aisle right there. They could roll their cart onto the sidewalk, and then go right up the ramp and into the building. And that would also give them a decent spot to try to get turned around and get back out to the road.
Okay.
So that would serve as kind of a loading zone.
So there's no curb there?
There is a flush curb right there. You can't have vertical curb for the fire code, because they want to make sure that a fire drive over it, they don't amaze in the fire truck. But that'd be flush.
Final appreciation.
Do we want a sign there, perhaps, that is indeed the loading zone, and that's where we want trucks to go?
You probably don't want to sign it necessarily, because the fire code's gonna say, technically, people shouldn't be blocking the fire turnaround. But I think in reality, it's gonna end up being used that way, and in the event a fire truck goes up, delivery truck is gonna move and get out of the way. But if you have a sign there, I think the fire marshal may take issue with that.
The size of our building, I guess, Rohit, does not, code does not dictate a loading zone for our type of operation?
I don't know the answer to that question readily, sorry.
I get, you know, Tristan, I guess, maybe?
I don't recall seeing one based on the size, off the top of my head, no.
Okay, I know that they're driven by type of operation and sizes and stuff.
Do we have a hydrant anywhere near the building? Like, what is?
There's one out, I keep mixing them up again. Is it Newtown over to the left, or is that Marvin School? I keep flipping on both.
Yeah, that's Newtown, if you're looking at the map the way it is, I believe.
So there is a hydrant over there, and I know on the previously approved plans, that was permitted by the fire marshal, because you don't have to pull hose from that hydrant, within seven hundred and fifty feet of all points of the building.
One question about the grass, just because of this little turnaround area. Are you guys putting down seed or sod for the disturbed area, to disturb ground?
It's gonna depend on the town's budget. My guess is what I usually see used in similar instances is seed around most of the area, and then sod in select areas. So maybe you use sod where the fire truck turnaround is, and maybe you use sod by the main entry of the building next to the parking lot, where you want it to look like grass right off the bat, while the rest of the stuff germinates and fills in.
Thanks, that answers my question.
One of the big driving factors there is time of year, when landscaping is going to be completed. Usually sow in grass seed, if you're gonna use Fescue, it would be kind of in the fall, September, October. If you're gonna be doing warm season, you can do that during the growing season in the summertime. But that kind of dictates what is needed for a good crop of grass as well.
I think my curiosity was really about, will the, whatever the sod and the seed match what is put down from the fire truck turnaround?
Potentially, yeah. Yeah, it's just a matter of you're getting one basically already grown in maps that get put down, versus getting the other one seeded in.
Do we know if we're using warm-seasoned grass or Fescue at this point for this?
To be honest, the plans haven't evolved to that level of detail. So if y'all have a preference, we can go ahead and call it out on the plans as we develop those for construction.
Rohit, so they, if they have specific requests like that, can they make the approval contingent upon these conditions? And we can list those out?
Yeah, I assume that, based on the conversation we had three minutes ago, that your motions to approve the site plan would include a contingent on bringing some of the finer details back to the design review board when they're.
But in addition to that, like, if they're okay with, let's just hypothetically say they're okay with everything they see here in the landscaping plan, except for the type of grass that's not laid out, can they make a motion to approve the landscaping plan on the condition that the grass is X, Y, Z?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so if y'all have some notes that you want to just keep in mind about, if there's certain things like that, that'd be great.
I'm making those notes, Christina, as they go along. All right, so site plan, any other questions on that for people? So that we can keep this, we can move this thing along a little bit. I mean, you know, we can, we can sit here and, you know, talk all night about it, but, you know, I'm trying to keep it focused somewhat, without being, you know, trying to ram it through, but still keep it moving.
I agree, let's keep moving, I think we're.
All right, so I think, so we've, we have addressed the site plan? We've addressed the landscaping plan? Yes, no? Moving on to the, all right, so we need the building plans?
Yeah.
Now, is that?
There's two left of this, uh, sorry, sorry.
We don't address the interior necessarily, do we, do we, Rohit, just that?
I did find in the ordinance that you do also look at the floor plan. I haven't pulled up, so I can show you.
Could we get, could we get one, someone, when we get that plan up, could we get someone who knows the plan, you know, well, to walk us through the, if you're a visitor, you know, what are you doing inside the building? Because it looks like there's some hallways, but it also looks like when you walk into certain lobbies, like you're kind of trapped, and you, there is no way to get, you know, anywhere else in the building unless you go through one of the offices or through the main meeting space. I would just like to understand what's the traffic pattern, what's the foot pattern like, and the purposes.
I can do that, Rohit, when you pull it up?
Yeah, give me one second. Oh, gosh. My remote computer that I'm using to access the server is kind of frozen up, so. I think I'm gonna have to download some things real quick, it might take a few minutes.
I can try to share on my end if you want.
Yeah, if I ask if Austin has a site, has a floor plan?
Yeah, it would be under the, I could dock for this meeting day, if you want to pull that up.
I can try, I can try to do it from this, if you want to try it.
That didn't show very well, I'm sorry, Christina, if Austin could get to it real quickly.
I think the V drive is frozen, so give me just a minute.
Yeah. I also think that the V drive is frozen, so.
I've got all the PDFs up, if you want me to screen share.
Please, yeah.
Yeah, I'm also working on getting the PDFs up, so, I mean, if you can just like pass a minute, I'll have it up on my, like, home computer here.
Somebody sing the Jeopardy song while he does that?
Can we dismiss Tristan now, that, I guess, it seems like we're done with him?
Yeah, the site plan and the landscape plan, the building plan is the artifact per view anyhow, so.
Is anybody, does anyone have any more questions for this other engineer?
No, I don't think so. Thank you, Tristan.
Thank you for the time, Mr. Herr.
You're welcome, let me know if you have anything else.
Thanks for the Tristan.
Thank you.
Okay, I just need just a few more seconds to start pulling everything up.
So is that our A or N now?
Is Kelly able to screen share hers?
Our drive is like.
No, I've got it pulled up, I just need to start pulling up, like, all of the other components of the building plan, and then I'll start to screen share. Okay, I'm ready.
One's struggling.
One's like it. Sorry, yeah.
And Rohit, the one that I was specifically talking about is VH202066881? It's one that looks like it's in a grid.
Hey, okay, I think I have 1.1 pulled up. And this would, this would be a great time to have two screens. Okay, sorry, I have to, since our office server is kind of down right now, I'm like recreating all the materials on my own computer, so give me one second.
Andy looks like he's channeling down on his own, dude.
Kind of solving problems on the fly here. Okay, this looks like it's the lighting plan, which is why you have all sorts of, it's like some sort of video game puzzle map. It's actually like if you're standing and looking up at the ceiling.
It's just kind of the easiest one to see what everything is. I just found it to be more like, just the simplest one visually.
Yeah, I feel like there was a simple floor plan that we were looking at, Christina, but I never saw, yes, 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 I've only ever seen print versions of this one. A1.0, okay. Yeah, I don't have A1.0, let me, you have it in an email, Christina, that you could send me, or? Because that really is the easiest one to look at. I was looking at 1.1.
Can you look in the, can you look in the V drive under the platoh 2020 revisions? It should be in there.
I can't look under the V drive, the server's.
Oh, okay. Honestly, I'd have to go through tons of emails to find it, to give you the most latest one. If we can pull up.
To what end are we looking for all this? Can somebody remind me what specifically we're looking for?
The floor plan. If we can just.
Lighting plan. Kelly, but, yeah, lighting plan doesn't really show you what everything is. It doesn't show doors and everything else, so I think we'll have to work from the floor plan.
Is there any way you can just like, look at my screen, can you maximize me?
Yeah, you can share my screen, anybody can share their screen.
We'll upload it to him.
Who's gonna, can we?
You want to share?
No, we don't, you shouldn't share, Christina, because it'll just show what's on your actual computer, not what you're holding up. We need to change our layout so that you are like speaker's stage or whatever, focused.
Rohit, if you are talking to us, we cannot hear you, you are muted.
Rohit, Rohit, if you pull, if you pull up the agenda, the cancel agenda, I know that I had all of this in the most recent agenda. If you could pull that up maybe from the internet and screen share it that way.
Most recent council, so like 1.
Work session.
Yeah, should be.
All right, perfect. Sorry about this, everyone, not sure what happened in our.
I can, while Rohit's talking, I'll go ahead and speak to some of the functionality, so when we're looking at it, it might make a little bit more sense. But as you walk in the back door, well, the parking lot door.
Parking lot side and Newtown side.
Okay, the parking lot door, you walk into a lobby, it's an open space, and you will have a reception area to your left. And that will basically be where our receptionist, whoever that might be, sits to answer anyone that comes in the door. Will also be the, you know, where the telephones and all that stuff are, front desk person. There's a bathroom that's right behind that person. And then adjacent to that would be another reception area, like a small meeting room. So if, you know, someone wanted to come in for a simple meeting, staff could come out and have that meeting right there, basically adjacent from the lobby, lobby area. Directly, as you walk in the lobby, you just continue to go forwards, that's where the meeting room is. So the reception area person would be able to, you know, answer anyone that comes in the door, and to also get the appropriate staff person to help them, should they need someone for planning and zoning, or myself, or taxes, or that sort of thing. And that's when the staff member would come out and get that person, so they're not wandering around the halls and wandering around where to go. All these doors will be access controlled. So really, when they come in, the only control they would have is in that lobby area, and would be greeted by the receptionist. As they walk through the cancel chambers, you know, they can sit down, listen to presentations, cancel meetings, whatever's needed there. And if they need to use a bathroom, there's a bathroom that's right outside the cancel chambers, on the other side of that room, which is also adjacent to another lobby, which carries out to the Newtown Road signs. There you go.
So this has been flipped since the last, I just wanted to state that. So the Newtown, what is labeled as the Newtown Road is now the parking lot side. So you come in from the parking lot here, I'm going to point you to the exit. This is, this is the parking lot side.
I'm sorry, Kelly, did you have a question?
Yeah, so if, if the reception areas are fobbed, or, you know, badge accessed, are people talking to them through a window, like a glass window? Or how does one get into the reception area, besides, I know a door, but?
Yeah, I don't, Rohit, I don't know if we have a glass reception area there, I don't know if any of the plans state whether there's glass or what it is. I assume that that's what, what it would be, other than just a clean opening, so that it's access controlled. Not, not the right side, Rohit, the right side's not gonna be glass for sure. The left would be a window.
Back to your conversation, the receptionist is on the left side, and that's where you and Austin, et cetera, would be. And to the right side is planning and et cetera, is that right?
That's correct. Our law enforcement. That's correct, our law enforcement, it's planning, um, finance.
Rohit, can you zoom in just slightly, it's, it's really hard for me to see.
So Rohit, can you um, go to the, the parking lot lobby?
Everybody, if you go up to layout and just click full screen, it gives them Zen, and you get rid of everybody else.
Um, Rohit, just drag your cursor down like you're a little person and we'll just kind of walk through the building and I'll just kind of explain it as you're walking. I, I don't know where your cursor is.
I don't think you can see this person.
John, that was much better.
Okay, alright, so you see to the left, there's the reception area, Rohit, if you go straight from the lobby? You don't have to make notes, you just will walk through. Right through the lobby is the council chambers. And then while people are sitting there, they can go out to the bathroom or out to the Newtown Road exit, which is what you see here. In addition to that back exit, front exit, whatever you want to call it, the Newtown Road exit, at some point whenever we do an amphitheater, farmer's market or whatever, if that is to be done, we can create a sidewalk to that area to that lobby where there would be access control and people could use the bathroom and get to all of those areas that he's highlighting there and ran, and that's pretty much it. That, that could still be functional.
So Christina, say that someone's in the council chamber for a meeting and they need to use their restroom, um, there would be, you know, it would be suggested for them to go uh, out the back towards, um, to those restrooms or what about this little backside door that leads into the reception area, will that be um, badge access only?
It will, yes. Yeah, all that would be locked off. Basically all the office areas will be wa- locked off for staff only. Um, now obviously public can come back there with, with a designated staff member, you know, escorting them, but we wouldn't have citizens just really walking around. You know, the back, the back area, I mean, the offices are pretty self-explanatory. Um, the archive room is, is really just a storage room for, you know, archives. The back conference room, that's up at the far top left, would be a miniature conference room for planning board meetings or, or things that don't need such a large space if, if we don't want to use the council chambers.
And.
Closed stash act ends, that sort of thing.
Have you identified the captain's office, the mayor's office, or has that been done?
We've identified mostly all of the offices, I don't have that layout in front of me and I'm I can't remember if we designated space for them or not, um, I know there's, you know, the office, Austin's, Rohit, and the planning assistant, um, the law enforcement officers. We have two finance people, potentially three with a tax collector. Uh, so we don't have a lot of office space remaining, which is why we've left room to grow on the east and, and west wings.
So this person, this person does not have offices, so each councilman doesn't have their office and the mayor doesn't have an office?
No.
We do, we do not have a, a office for each council member now.
And Christina, confirm, uh, confirming that our, if we were in the middle of a session and we had to go into closed session, we would be using that conference room in the top left of, on our screen, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Christina, what, what's that add, that larger admin room again, the bottom left-hand corner administration? Is that a huge? Oh, that's big.
Yeah, it's just a bigger office.
Oh, girl.
We can kind of divide it too if we need room to grow, but that's, we just wanted to have a larger one. It's not as large as, as it looks. It is a hmm, eleven, about twenty? Roughly.
Would there be a designated like council, um, like so, say if somebody wanted to meet with uh, Bob and I for um, you know, a, a separate meeting, where would you see us, uh, what, what currently right now would you see us, what room would we take over, the conference room?
Um, Rohit's got planning assistant labeled, that's not actually an office, that's a lot, like a, a, a conference, a mini conference room.
Okay.
So that would be probably where y'all meet, planning assistant's not going to be in there, um, he would be in office, he or she would be in office four or three.
And is that all closed off or is that open with glass?
That hall is open right now, but the access control is, is right there to the left where the door is. That would stay closed unless it's being utilized.
What is the other office that he's got marked all council, is that for us to share at this point, if, if we need?
No, probably not.
Yeah, no, cause I don't really see uh, council members needing specific offices at this point, we don't. It's not like we are at Platte Hall every day, we're there for meetings and, and that's pretty much it.
Most places don't have them.
Yeah, and that's not something we've ever really discussed, is all y'all having offices, um, we did plan for one common office and, and that's what's shown here. And obviously these can be moved around, it's just kind of labeling positions with space.
What's the top right?
Archives.
Is there any questions about anything else, we did leave a good ample space for, you know, audiovisual stuff?
I kind of like the, the layout, I like the fact that the council's office is next to the administrator's office, next to the door, so we don't have to bother everybody else if we need to go in and out.
One of the things that, when I did a tour of.
The um, the floor plan for the chambers, are those, the rows of seats, are they, is it just a flat floor, it's not staking seating, so like the people in the back can actually see? I have short people issues, so like, if I were in here, I would don't see around someone, so, just curious.
It is a flat floor.
Christina, one of the things when I did years ago, when we were planning the interior, I took the clerk and the um, uh, the, I think it was just the clerk and I, maybe uh, I think it was just us two. There was a, an area where, a workroom where gave enough room to kind of coalesce and get things, you know, where you plan and get ready for um, our meetings and stuff, which takes a lot of, you know, right now it's still not all done on the computer, we get our packets and stuff like that, that work area, is that a big enough space right there? For that kind of?
It is, yep.
That was one thing that was brought up to us, that that's, you know, something that's important from a
It's about a ten, ten by eleven-ish kind of space.
Okay.
We're working with a two by two space right now, so I think we will find an eleven by ten.
Okay.
Even to include in the um, council chambers, is that going to be a straight table?
We have taken out the dais, we can obviously put that back in, I don't, as, you know, if we want to do that, but right now that's kind of up in the air, if y'all want a dais, we can put it back, but right now it's planned to be a straight table.
I mean, I'd rather be able to look at pool, considering we have, you know, nobody that comes to our meetings. So instead of looking at a bunch of empty chairs, I'd rather at least be able to look at, you know, council. That's my opinion.
Yeah, and when we get to the interior design, we can add the dais in there.
Okay.
That doesn't even.
I just wasn't.
We have another councilman, which would be five.
Okay.
Yeah, but then, the total was supposed to be six council. And where's, and the mayor's where?
You and the president.
Yeah, so.
We'll make sure we have enough seats, I don't know if there's, you know, there's the, the right number of seats identified here, but this is really for illustration's sake, we can do the, the dais and all the interior when we get to that point.
Just keep in mind that the, the whole thing was going to, from four to initially five and then potentially six council if it gets passed, and then a, and a mayor. But I like the rounded version, like half moon.
Christina, so I think that's more interior furnishings and stuff, isn't it, uh, you know, the other thing, it would be easy to, to say what if, and what if, and what if, but you have to remember, um, the size of Marvin and Marvin's budget as well, you know, we're not City of Charlotte kind of thing.
In that case, I don't think the furniture is in the purview of this meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's the point I was making.
Yeah.
Point I was making, yeah, is that.
I, I was, I was merely asking because I didn't know if that was something that would actually be like installed into floor, or if it was just like a table. So I was merely trying to clarify that, cause if it was something that you guys needed to approve, then, then I two-sit.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just trying to get. To move, move things as, as extravagiously as possible without necessarily shortcutting, but, you know. I think several of you said in these meetings, we can go for hours and hours.
Is everybody, did you have any more questions on the floor plan itself?
I was going to ask any questions from any of the, the board members. Tell, most of the conversation came from the council, regarding the floor plan. Alright, uh, moving on, do we need to talk about the exterior, any further, exterior elevations?
Um, Rohit, I did make sure that, the one that requested items from the planning board at the last meeting was to make sure they went over all the exterior finish schedules. I did, I did assure that John Urban put that schedule in, that material that was sent them, sent to them last week, and nothing in the exterior has changed as far as the, the makeup material. So the building materials have been there and nothing has changed in that since they last saw it.
My only question about materials is, looks like all white on white, so it's white trim on white. Hardy plank, no contrast. Is that correct?
Yeah.
In that report Kelly, you know, I go back to, you know, we are quote, at least in my mind, we are in the, the heritage district and we're trying to mimic what would have been here a hundred years ago. Probably would have been white on white, wouldn't it?
I think, banks is white on white, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Now mine was, John, mine was more for clarification purposes, like I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something.
Yeah, the only other thing I'd throw out, you know, I, if first, you know, we can go into, but I think that that personally, I think that wanders off of the heritage district, the only other thing is, is the, the roof colors, uh, you know, and some of the color elevations look like black. Probably a dark green would look better, maybe, you know, more like slate or or, you know, gray shingles or something, more period, correct, once again?
It's gonna fade.
Versus a pure black.
I agree, John. Are there also going to be screens on the windows and are they going to be lift, I don't know the technical terms, like the lift windows or the rollout windows?
I honestly have no clue about the lift windows, I would think that they're not going to be um, functional, I could be wrong on that, but to my understanding, there are no screens.
Good luck, it's an AC break, y'all.
Well, yeah, we got, that's why we have the generator.
Yeah. And, and multiple.
But just right above the effects of broken, a broken AC unit, so.
This is true.
Christina, if I remember correctly, I, I remember seeing something where uh, a detail saying double hung windows. Uh, I could be wrong, but I, it seems like I remember a description somewhere in the plans at one point.
Uh, Rohit, do we have any details on that, do you know what detail sheet that is?
And what does double hung mean?
And, the, the windows that you left out.
Okay, thank you.
They slide up or down depending, single hung is just the bottom slides up, double hung is both top and bottom moved.
Great, thank you. I don't know what detail sheet that would be. If there's a preference on that, I mean, if y'all want to make a recommendation, but I can't, unfortunately I can't answer that question right now.
The, the windows, just the outside of the windows, because if it were double hung, it would have a piece of trim in the middle, which would be white. And a lot of that, if it was all white going across the windows, it can change kind of the look and feel of the the entire, you know, side of the building. It should just be representative, that's actually what it is.
Well, it says on the paint schedule that the trim is white, the siding is white, doors are black. Doesn't specifically say windows.
It says windows at the top clad wood is material, um, it doesn't give, give the specification as to what kind.
Okay.
It says W twenty-five hundred, I don't know if anybody knows what that means, but.
Did you see my, did you see my point?
I'm trying to look up the model number right now and see if they give uh, no, it's a clad wood, uh, but it's in any, any uh, can be double hung, single hung, casement, any of them, so that doesn't give a, it, it can come in any, in that model, so uh, it doesn't give a detail.
I'll put that on, on my, my list of conditions, so we can come back to whatever it is that y'all recommend on that.
I'm not sure that it's, you know, func- functionally, you know, I think that, I don't see any reason that they need to be fun, you know, operating windows. You know, in a
Seriously?
In a government building.
I don't know, I think I'd like to get some fresh air when it's nice out, besides the kind of that uh, period, um, if you want to stay, you know, it's a hundred years ago, they would have all opened because they would have needed to, so.
Uh, you're, you're right, you're right.
Would, would they have had shutters?
Yes.
Not necessarily, no. You know, shutters would have been, you know, unless you were down on the coast, I, I think that, you know, up here you didn't have shutters. Those are the decoration.
Is, is this the level of detail that we're supposed to be voting on tonight?
It is.
Alright, like what's our purview here, because we don't have full plan, we don't have full site plan, like what are we supposed to accomplish here? Cause there's a lot of speculation going on with no definitive uh, information. It's like we're designing the thing on the fly here instead of looking at what someone else is designing, to me it feels like we're, we're in circles a little bit.
What, what exactly is here, is not here that you wish to see?
Apparently like window specs, railing specs, like everything we're talking about. Office, who, whose office is where, I mean, like I'm saying, are we at the right level of detail for what a purview is for this meeting?
Rohit, is that the ordinance for their purview?
I mean, I would have thought the, the, the look of the building is within our purview, how the seats are aligned would be a different story. But certainly the material, the, the outside of the building is going to be made of, actually whether it has shutters, those kinds of things would indeed, I think, be the design review board's uh, area to comment on.
Yes, that's correct. I'm, I've highlighted the ordinance here, this is the design review board section. Um I've highlighted the ordinance here, this is the design review board section of the ordinance. Uh and it does say door, window locations, opening fills, um pictures, attachments, all architectural elements and materials. So any of, everything that you've been talking about for, you know, the last several minutes are in the in the purview.
Okay, cool, thank you.
I I would also say that it's, I'd I'd like to see what the actual light fixtures look like, uh I mean, at least on the outside. Um are there any street, like are there any street posts or light posts or anything around the building in the parking lot area, like the, like is is lighting a part of this? Because that is a design element. Rohit? You ran away.
I don't know that I've seen any site lighting addressed at all.
I I haven't seen any, but we did comment, if you remember, John, um at the council meeting about some uh low voltage uplighting on the building for accent. Uh and that could also be used for um lighting sidewalks and such um with a low voltage system. It's very efficient and um can work very well. As far as light lampposts, I I haven't seen anything.
I haven't seen any of that from the architect.
I haven't, I haven't any. I just add exterior site lighting to the uh list of things that we would, that would need to be, you know, presented again like, you know, on a later date.
Yeah, and if we can, I mean, if y'all wanna make your your motions of, you know, whatever you see as far as the site plan with all these contingencies and conditions on additional stuff that you'd like to see, that's kind of what I what I need to know. Obviously, the architect's not gonna know every single finite little detail at this point in time that needs to be looked over, but we do need to get mov- moving on, you know, construction plans, um.
Yeah.
So we can always come back to some of these later details, but I need to know exactly what they are.
So. I agree with you, John, on the lighting plan, I think we should, I mean, you you're gonna have meetings at night in time, you've got a shed work, you've gotta light that parking lot light, and I mean, we've gotta see that.
Rohit, we're talking about.
Yeah, do you have a photometric plan?
Not that I've seen, I looked through the uh.
And and is that part of DRB's approval? I would assume yes, but.
Yeah.
That is not something that we had sent to the architect that we needed tonight for some reason, so that leads me to believe that I'm not sure if that's in the ordinance.
Is there a way to disapprove whatever you guys need in order to move forward with building like the site plan? Um really, the site plan is is what you need to move forward, correct? Like, we're not looking to change any interior, like it's all decorative at this point, what we're talking about, and like exterior lighting, so like what do you have to have in order to move forward so that we're not, the the design and the color of railing is not holding you up from, you know, getting going?
Yeah, the way the ordinance is written, it's very specific in terms of how we can proceed forward with the approvals we need, so we would need to get approval on um some language that we'll get Rohit to look up in just a second with the contingency of additional approval on photometrics, window type, specific grass, decorative fencing, signs, handicap railing, those things, so y'all can.
Let me sort of throw out the the list that I've started for everybody, you know, not, we're voting right this moment. But I've got it broken down, we've got to vote on the site plan. We've got to vote on the landscape plan. And as I see it, the exterior plans, if 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 I'm correct there. So let me go, you know, each one of those votes. Site plans, I see that we need to reserve judgment for a later date on the exterior lighting. That will be all encompassing. The exterior signage, whether it be, you know, handicap signs or or uh Village of Marvin, you know, Village Hall, et cetera. The hand- the handicap railing. Under the landscape plans, uh I see the revised planning along, what property line is that? Over toward, away from Newtown Road, east, west, north? You know, I'm not sure of the the geographical direction there, but the revised planning along that property line and the type of grass. And then as far as the exterior plans, the equipment screening and the window types, and I'll say types and color. Anything else, that that's what I've got on my list. Does that sound reasonable to everybody at this moment? Any other additions or anything, comments?
Did you say decorative fencing? Because I know that is something they discussed.
Well, I I I classified that as equipment screening, would that be?
Okay.
Equipment screening slash decorative fencing.
Can you unmute me?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, okay.
And and John, I think under, I think windows would go under uh the first one, would it not, the exterior?
Windows? That's under, you know, under exterior, you know, I call that exterior plans, uh elevations.
Okay, I I just didn't, yeah, I just didn't.
Yeah.
See see windows, so windows under that, so you have exterior signs, exterior lighting, railing, and windows, correct?
Well, under the site plan, I've got the exterior lighting, the exterior signage. And this one, that that could include building sign and and, you know, handicap parking or directional signs or whatever necessary, you know, in the future. And then the handicap railing. Land state plan is the revised planning on that one property line and the type of grass. And then exterior elevations, the equipment, equipment screening slash decorative fencing and the window types and color.
That's the equipment plan?
That's building plans.
John, can you add door types as well?
Okay, window and door, okay, door and window.
Yeah, I'm just, this this just seems like an awful lot of loose ends that need to be tied up, I mean, is it common to to vote when we have so many things that are, you know, we still need to see, I mean, lighting? Not only are you gonna have to be a photometric plan, we're gonna see, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to have a say on what type of material it is. Or are there are there legs against the building? Um what size is the signage, what's it look like? It just seems like there's a ton of outstanding issues here.
Michael, you know, that's I I'm trying to move this along, I'm not sure, you know, so that, you know, we can move the project. But, you know, so that we would be, what I'm saying here is that we would be excluding approval of the exterior lighting, for example, so there's no exterior lighting approved. So anything they want to do, whether it be low voltage uplighting on the building, or light poles, or lights, uh anything exterior lighting would have to be be submitted.
Alright, I mean, and that's very, it's a good explanation, then we shouldn't, um then we should be voting on that, and so the building that we're allowing doesn't have lighting, doesn't have ceiling, doesn't have railings, they can't put it up until we approve it, correct?
Correct.
Uh but they but they can't put it on the plans, they can't put it out for bids though, that's the problem. You know, because we we don't know what type of lighting there is, we don't know what type, how can you bid for that without knowing what specifically you want and need? And I think that's where we we got, we wanna get this thing advanced so they can get it out to bid.
Christina, I'll throw the number back to you.
Yeah, I can buy that into here in there, it's um more precedent that the DRB does take like two or three months of back and forth. Um they will tell uh, they tell a construction uh company or whoever's seeking DRB approval. They will only honestly like come back next month and say, okay, you're getting closer, and then the third month, okay, you're having everything. And that's kind of what I've seen happen um historically.
Rohit, you're exactly right, and unfortunately, that's the way Marvin operates. I mean, that's the way we've always operated.
And unfortunately, the only thing that I can tell you is that I know that y'all are frustrated with the fact that not everything's here. Uh we were given a timeline from staff to follow from a campus standpoint, we're doing our jobs the best that we can to make sure this happens. Things have changed several times in the last couple of weeks, we've had to present changes to the architects and the engineer, just as of last week, to make some of the changes, so everybody working just as fast and as diligently as they can within the timelines and the permits that we've been given. Uh I'm I'm sorry that the information is not there. Um but the only thing I can tell you at this point in time is, yes, we are trying to move forward. If you have recommendations on those type of things, we can put them in there, if y'all want to postpone it, that's totally fine. We can let council know, I'm just telling you what um, you know, what we've been dealt with based off of the information that we've been given as well.
Christina, I certainly um respect your point of view and realize you're in a difficult spot, but like when you say you've been directed by staff, what does that mean on the timeline? Who is staff?
By council, by council.
The council.
Staff has been, council has been.
The council said this is the timeline we want, get the uh board approval for the design.
No, they didn't specifically said that, but they did, they they, we took action on the established timeline and that timeline, you know, obviously involves y'all into the process. Um so they didn't specifically say take it take it to DRB by a certain day and time, but we are driven by our timeline in order for us to set these goals, and this is where we're at now.
I mean, I've always tried to been a proponent for an expeditious movement of items through the the government here in Marvin, but I I probably agree with Michael here in that to say that I don't understand what would have drawn up the way for like you did, you showed earlier about a half hour ago, all those details that we're supposed to sign off on. Um it seems like those details are all here, we can just do that.
Yeah, and Rohit, Rohit, I will say I specifically had had asked you to give me all of the the, you know, detail sheets that were needed from the DRB standpoint, the photometrics was not in that list of included documents, so again, that's leading.
Photome- I just looked through the ordinance, uh lighting was not a part of the study, and that is under DRB's.
So and again, that leads me to believe that that's not something that would be under their purview, so I don't know. In addition to that, I don't know if specific detail in terms of um decorative fencing, handsyc- like the handicap railing. I don't know if it's as detailed as that, I would assume that at least railing would be. But I know that you specifically had sent me what you needed based off of the ordinance, and some of the things that are being addressed here were not in that specification that you gave me, so I don't know if that finding would be in the ordinance.
Yeah, I also see here, um like you guys are looking at the ordinance right now, and now while it does say, you know, door and window locations, um and design detail material, color schemes, um not really seeing like type of window here, so like, it's, I don't know.
Well, the
But but let me.
Type, type of window actually informs the color choice, so when you look at the rendering right now, it looks like the the black, some sort of weird black frame in it, like really, but you can't tell, is that an actual design choice, or is that just the um file that the architect threw in there to say, this is a window?
No, it is black, it's black framed, black window.
Yeah, it said black, it did.
Okay, that that was actually what I was asking earlier, was what is the trim on the window itself, so if it's black, then.
Rohit, can you um pull up that ordinance when you get done and just make sure that it does not say say photometrics? I want to be clear.
Yeah, I had it up just now, and I didn't see lighting in in any of the ten category.
Well, there was something on on lighting in there, Rohit, on the elevation, uh.
In here or in the elevation section?
Well, but it's moving, I can't keep up.
Okay, sorry.
Lighting and other fixtures, the illustrative renderings.
Yeah. Right, pedestrian relative with landscape lights, lighting and other fixtures, char- characters, yeah.
I see.
So.
So I need, the lighting fixtures would be in there, but not the photometric plan?
Right, I would agree with that. See here how it says junction box for light mount, and looks like these lantern looking things.
Well, so, okay, so what you see here is is what you get unless you have other recommendations.
I'm fine with that level of detail, I would like to ask one question, but I I would I feel like I totally understood the answer, I made the answers been presented to you guys since clarified. I was not comfortable with the air conditioning and the garbage being right at the front entrance of the building, and I know there was some explanation on the site plan about why it couldn't be somewhere else. Can you just may help me understand why it has to be there? Because I just think it's a horrible idea if you had another option.
Yeah, just to clarify, the front of the building is actually, Rohit, can you point out where where this is located? So we can make sure we're on the same page. It's it's actually the back of the building, the lobby, um the parking lot side.
So.
Okay, now I I totally see, okay, I apologize.
Yeah, I think the uh the labels on the renderings were kind of reversed, but because we rotated the building at some point, um but the front, which used to face Newtown Road, is now facing the parking lot, and so that's where that's.
Okay, I you're right, I was looking at the roads, right, you said the roads were wrong, I forgot about that, okay. So all that is from the side.
Okay.
Alright.
But it's still to the right of the main entrance, correct?
Yes.
You you were walking in.
Well, it's on the front.
Side is on the right.
So, yeah, front facade.
Look at, look at the rendering. The rendering has that that um screening that goes all the way against the porch.
Right, and this is the far side of engines, this is the side where like reasonably, no one would actually walk that way to get into the building, like anyone, you know, if they're not, if they're using the stairs, they would walk this way. And if they're needing the ramp, they would probably walk this way.
So is the front elevation not correct that we saw before?
No, that front elevation that you're looking at, the way they had it depicted on there, it makes it look like it's right next to the front door, and it's not, it's in that alley code. So just, you struggle on this a little bit, Rohit, what they're looking at is, you see, that should move to the right and set back in where that bush is.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not correct representation of where that thing goes.
Okay, so the path is wrong, right. That that goes a long way of solving my issue, I mean, the fact that it's not where, it's not going.
Right, it goes around the corner, and that was, we moved it back there because they actually had the generator on the opposite side of the building facing Newtown, but we didn't like that.
Well, how could you have presented a drawing that was reflective of what was gonna be built? I mean, that would help, I mean, I feel like I wasted an hour trying to figure that out, figure that.
Same issue. But but even still, though, like what doesn't make any sense to me is that why the architect would eve- have a ramp, a handicap ramp on either side to make it symmetrical, but then still put, even though it's set back, which I'm I'm glad to know that, you've got, you've got this area that would normally be in the back of someone's house or on the barrier beside of someone's house. And it's, it closes off the whole, you know, scale of that.
The the reason that that is there now is at our last meeting, uh you and Michael did not want the main entrance to be on Newtown Road, you wanted it to be on the parking lot side.
But what does that have to do with where the where the generator and AC HVAC units are?
So do you, but what everybody going up and down Newtown Road is gonna see is the elevation on Newtown Road. Would you rather them on Newtown Road and drive, how many thousands of people a day drive past, past it there? Would you rather them be looking at the the generator and air conditioning units there?
And and what, if I could, if I could chime, guys, if I could chime in, the other reason was, uh we were trying to put all the, let's call it utility, you got generator, you got air conditioning, you got garbage, all in one area. The garbage made sense from a standpoint of when the garbage truck comes to pull up. Is he gonna go, I mean, are we gonna ask our staff to pull everything around the front and stuff, and to John's point, the majority of the people, we have very little people that show up for meetings, but the majority of people driving by Town Hall, what are you looking at? That was my biggest concern about flipping it and what it's gonna look like from the road, because the fifteen thousand people driving by are gonna look at that, and I didn't necessarily want them looking at garbage cans, generator through, you know, even if they screened it, so that's, that's what made most sense, putting it up in that top corner, sort of hidden from everything, there's really no other. There's really no other place. And we wanted to put everything all in one place, if that makes sense. And from a garbage...
It does, it does, thank you.
I mean, you've got to have them somewhere, so, you know.
And given that perspective, that makes a lot of sense, especially now that I know the roads were wrong. So, so you're, and I agree with you very much, Joe. There's gonna be 5% of the citizens in our country go in the building and 95 will drive by it all the time. So, I agree with having, you know, the, the view from the road take priority. That's what you've done and I would support that.
Yeah. And I always use the analogy of go by Starbucks. I guarantee you, you'll see their garbage cans out cause they never designed for that. And that's where majority of people drive by and that's what they see.
I, I will say though, that the rendering on this screen that we're looking at right now looks like the fence, um, is even with the porch posts. So, it looks like in the rendering, in this rendering of the layout is, the rendering that we saw where it looked like it was budding the porch, that's correct. It is budding the porch according to this plan.
But, um, Kelly, you know, you've got, uh...
I mean, the rendering, this, this just needs to change. If it doesn't actually come up against the porch, then it needs, this needs to change.
You've got an extended elevation at the entrance. That sort of, you can see it there, there's this slightly curved steps that are diagrammatic right in front of the entrance. And then it steps back to the, you know, to the, you know, towards the building slightly.
Um, I, I think what is drawn here is different than what was just explained earlier about it being set back and all this flush with the front of the building, not the, um, not the post, but hold up the porch.
I think the rendering may be, I think the rendering may be wrong. It should be on the far right as what, yeah.
And, and that, I'm just thinking the rendering needs to change. It, because the way that it was explained earlier makes sense. That it's set back, but the porch, if we're approving, if we're approving an actual design on a piece of, on a piece of paper, it needs to be correct.
To Kelly's point there too, I think, you know, if we're still pushing for a vote tonight, I don't know how we can do that. There's just too many outstanding issues and Rohit made the point earlier that, you know, we would ask the people who are coming before us, you know, to present it as an accurate piece, uh, a site plan that, that accurately reflects what you're gonna build and what we're seeing tonight. We just don't have that. So, I, I just don't know how we can vote on anything.
Michael, I, I agree with you. I think we need to get the, uh, appropriate information taken guys, brought up tonight, get it to you guys, to this, to this thing and go from there.
And let's, let's say that we, we need to provide a specific list of things that need to be corrected. Because Michael, I know that you went down this road as a developer and Mark, I'm sure you have to, cause I have, that I go to, to the government, a set of plans, and they say, change this, 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 and this. So, I go back and make, make all those changes and I come back and they say, oh, but now we want you to change this, 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 and this as well. It's a never-ending cycle.
Well, John, you don't think a little taste of medicine would be good for government? Just kidding.
And John, the point is, is we're just reading what the zoning and ordinances are telling us to do. And I think that the architect, the engineer, they should read the ordinance. So, the plan that they're presenting to the planning board for approval reflects everything that is requested in the ordinance. And you're asking us to do everything that's not, well, if it's not there, when we start reviewing it, we're gonna recognize that it's not there.
Michael, your point's correct, but what John's saying, let's just be specific about what they bring back next time. That's, I'm not totally, I'm, yeah, I'm totally, uh, I agree with that 100%, but, I mean, I think John's telling us, you know, it's not our fault, the ordinances are there. John, why don't you make your list of all the things you're gonna come back to us with next time? We can all say either add something to it or not and then we'll be good.
But can I interject here, I agree with everything you're going to say, but in addition to that, Rohit, are some of the things being requested here, some, are, are they all items that are actually in the ordinance? For example, we've just, just identified the photo metrics is not part of the purview that they're looking at. Now, the fixtures are, but some of the finite detail, I think that we've, we've asserted that the window height is not in that purview as well. Is there anything else that, that, that's being requested that's not necessarily something that we should be talking about here?
I would need, I would need to listen to the whole list again, sorry.
I have the list, minutes.
John, I nearly would, you have the list, right?
Who's that?
Let's, I'm sorry, I was trying to...
But Christine, if I could make a point before we get to the list. Christine, I think that your point is very good. A photo metric is not required, we have to comment on what types of lighting you have. Well, how can we comment on why do you run lights if a photo metric is not required? I mean...
Yeah, that, that's what the ordinance says, so...
No, I get, if, if, if we're worrying about the lighting and photo metrics aren't required, you're not, you're not still, you're not required to put lighting if you don't have a photo metric design.
Is that a planning board approval or a design board approval?
Uh, yeah, so normally we, we do have a lighting section and that does come to planning boards separately. It's not in the design or the perception. Like remember when we did the, um, the Marvin Creek tennis court lighting? That came as part of, uh, a planning board approval, as the CUP.
So, the photo metric would be a part of the planning board, not the DRB?
Right, right. It's not, it's not that you wouldn't, if you wouldn't allow lighting, it just comes as a separate...
Got you.
But, but to, but to Michael, to Michael's point, are we able to vote on something that could be put out to bid? Or do we have to circle back and, and, and identify all these, this list of things to, at a later time, add to the bid or how does that work? And, and I, I'm asking because I don't know.
Well, I wouldn't, Joe. I think, I think that you have to have, you have to have everything done before you put it out to bid. Because if you don't, then you start getting change orders. And change orders are a nightmare. You don't wanna add anything after the fact. You wanna have everything done before you start construction, before you put it out to bid. When, when AGC was to structurally and intelligently plan his bid around the fact that there's so much missing that they call his profit on those items, no question. If, if he was worth his salt, he would do that, that's right.
This is, this is not the level of construction documents that we would send out to bid. All of those are still being prepared by the architect. Um, again, we just asked them tonight for the aesthetic, uh, items that are in the ordinance that we have right in the DRB. So, the construction documents would have the, um, photo metrics.
Who reviews the construction documents? Would that be planning board?
Stop right there, stop, stop right there, Rohit, go back up, cause it said photo metric detail.
Right there, C.
Such as furniture manufacturer, angles of light, is that DRB or is that planning board?
I'm still looking for that.
No, it's right there, it says it right there, AC, A1C. Construction, submission contents, any applicant receiving approval, and then look at C, photo metric detail.
Right, right, that, so this will be, this will have to be reviewed. I'm still looking for if, uh, when, when the tennis court lighting came, it was because it was a CUP.
But, but who is it, who is this photo metric detail to be approved by? By the zoning administrator, by the planning board, or by the DRB?
Right, I'm looking at that.
Wha, what is this ordinance applied to?
Uh, it looks like the zoning administrator here, it says, shall be efficiently complete to enable the zoning administrator to determine compliance.
Okay, so the photo metric detail is approved by the zoning administrator? The DRB requirements per the ordinance are only the lighting fixtures as seen in the elevations that we have presented in front of us.
But I think it was, it was earlier they asked, you know, they still want to keep the lighting fixtures that would cause the, the parking lot lighting, um, like what do you do, like we don't have that.
Rohit, I think, perhaps we can give you a little time, not tonight on the fly, to review this and get back. I mean, this is DRB, this, I mean, I think it might be, you might have to review this and see what you're looking at and who it's for and, and get back to us. I mean, we're, we're cutting and pasting it seems here.
Because, well, what we should do, I just, I just said that, like there's, there are more, when you said that you need it...
We can't hear you, Cam.
Face it, yeah. So, why don't we figure out exactly what we need or you guys need and then you guys can have other meetings?
I, 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 I agree with that, but I also think John made a good point, like let's compile everything we think we're missing so that they know exactly what to bring to the next meeting so that we can progress. Like if, if they just go, we just go, oh, go come back when you got it more complete. That just seems to be like setting ourselves up for more delay, tension.
Yeah, that sounds good. Do you need counsel here for that? Can we answer any questions that might help move that portion along?
I mean, I think if Bob would just read his, or excuse me, John would just read his list, that we could all say, okay, that's got everything I need. Like my main thing is I wanna see the proper road, which road is facing which side of the building and where that garbage goes. Those, that, that fence that's blocking half the front of the building in the current law. Like that to me is my main issue. Once we get that, I feel like the rest of these details are, you know, you can manage to find property with all kinds of different solutions. But that one's usually the bigger, so that one's...
Mark, do you have a copy of that site plan as, as an exploded view, like the whole thing? You can see the whole site plan? Cause it has the roads, how they're oriented, how the buildings oriented to them, the parking lot, the screen, everything on it.
Yeah, that, that probably on me for not having that, I, I...
Okay, yeah, cause books...
I only went with what was on the screen tonight.
Yeah, what was on the screen tonight was, was zoomed in for, for more clarity. But if you have the, the whole site plan in front of you, it gives a, a very wide view of the entire site and how it orients to the surroundings, it's much more clear.
With the proper roads and all the...
With the roads around about everything, it's very clear when you can see, when you can zoom out and see the entire map.
Fair enough.
That might help.
I'll review that then for sure.
Yeah, our, our view though, um, we don't have the corrected, um, where the generator and the HVAC is going. Our site plans don't, don't have that, those changes. But the, the roads are correct.
So, let me, let me go back over this list and see.
That was just made though.
Yeah, I've got it in. Site plan, landscape, and exterior. And that'd be exit and elevation. Site plan, exterior lighting. Signage, which would incorporate, you know, handicap signs, you know, parking signs, et cetera, I guess. Handicap railing. All right, uh, landscape plan, revised planning along property line opposite Newtown Road, whatever that...
Border to the...
Direction of, you know, it was, and the type of grass. Exterior elevations need to have that one elevation corrected as it pertains, shows the screening. We'll need information on the screening, de, slash decorative fencing. Door and window types and colors. And I'm gonna throw in signage there because the elevation I saw last week showed, you know, a sign on Newtown Road, you know, on that, that gable that said Marvin Village Hall. So, I think that needs to be incorporated there. And also the sign, or the lights as they pertain to the building elevation, not parking lot lights, but, and landscape lighting, but, you know, there's little, uh, lanterns by the doors, et cetera.
How much detail do you have on on those fixtures other than what you see here?
The what?
How much detail do you want on the light fixtures other than what you see here that's in the elevations? Cause the, the ordinance doesn't specify, you know, the, the type, the model, all that stuff, it just says...
But, you know, if, if the, if the, the picture, if the drawing is, is aesthetically the same as whatever the fixture's gonna go there, I guess it would be all right.
Yeah, but I imagine you would put whatever light you're gonna put up, you would have the technical specs for that light.
I'm not sure that we need technical spec, but we need the new...
How tall it is, how many, what, uh, what's the wattage, how many lumens, stuff like that, I think, that would come with the manufacturer.
Well, that would be all part of our commercial partners. That would be all part of the, the construction document. So, it sounds to me like at this point, y'all are asking for construction documents to be complete and full, y'all can review. Is that, am I hearing y'all right on that?
No, I think whatever the designer views, boards, purview is on the, on the lighting, what is our purview? What is, what is required we look at? Do we look at whatever the design of the light pole is? Do we look at how lighting, what, what type of lighting is? Whatever our purview is for each specific, uh, point that John made is, I think, what we're gonna be asking for.
And what I understand, what the, what I understand what the ordinance read is that y'all are supposed to be looking at aesthetics. The, the actual lighting is per code, which is code enforcement. That's gonna be dictated by code. How much light is provided, how many posts, where they're placed for, uh, safety reasons and, and, and the such. It's all dictated by code, that, that's, that's law. So, there is no, uh, varying from that. What I understand from that, uh, from what I read is that y'all are looking at purely aesthetics as far as lighting goes. What type of style of post do you like? What type of style of fixture do you like on the porch? And I, and, and from what I've seen, the architecture of this building is pretty much, uh, Craftsman style. Um, the windows, the way the windows look, the, the, the elevations and all that. So, um, what I would suggest from my standpoint is that we look at, um, that type, that style, Craftsman style fixtures and such, windows, all that, that would dictate to that period. Um, that's just from, that's just a suggestion from my standpoint. You can take it wherever you want here in the DRB, but I, that's my suggestion.
And yeah, I think it's a good suggestion and I think that that's exactly what I was trying to get at. Whatever our purview is for that, whatever we're supposed to be doing, and I think maybe we all need to review it one more time before we get back together, so we understand what we're supposed to be looking at. And what you're submitting is what we are both going to be requesting. So, I think it goes both ways.
Cause also, you know, when we do this with, you know, say, uh, Publix, we get a level of detail that is like beyond this. So, we need to know from, from Rohit, is that what is required? Or are they just giving that because, you know, they're a multi-million dollar corporation? So, it, we can't treat you guys differently than the way we treat them, but we do need to understand what is specifically required, um, because sometimes I feel like we might be getting more from outside folks than we would, than we actually need to approve. It's just, it's confusing.
The, the Publix is a different zoning situation there, Kelly. That under that zoning, they had to submit everything in minute detail or the zoning... This, this is the different zoning, you know, here.
So, we haven't really had, most of the stuff that the designer review board, at least in the last three years I've been on board, has been some sort of special, you know, like this is, this is standard. I don't remember doing anything this standard in a while. So, for me, I'm confused about what level of detail we actually need to be looking at. Because all we've done are special zoning, uh, approvals. Does that make sense?
Rohit, can you please pull up the very top of that ordinance where it talks about what it is, they, where it says, um, they have to approve landscape sign, I mean, it's specific, it says the, the four things that we were gonna discuss tonight and get approval on, is that the very top of the ordinance? I think y'all all bring up, you know, a lot of good points. Um, I know there's been a lot of detail discussed and the way that we have interpreted what he's getting ready to show you is that the finite detail that, you know, assessing has not been something that's part of your purview per, per se. So, I think that that's where some of the confusion has come into play, specific site plan and design plans. Specific site and design plans, precise.
Site, site plans and design plans for individual buildings, architecture, non-residential buildings and buildings for, for the district.
You know, I, we can all sit and read this, but, you know, for us, we're not necessarily going to interpret it. Like, Rohit, you guys need to interpret what it, what this really means, because we gotta get it clear, because if, if you guys and us are having issues with this, imagine what it's like for, you know, just Joe Schmo coming in, sorry, Joe, and you, like that, but, you know, just some average person coming in and trying to get this done. This has to be clarified.
Let, let me throw out some, uh, Rohit Foot moving in. Something. And, I have a second one, specifics, design plans, et cetera, et cetera. The second line there says, for non-residential buildings and buildings in a conditional district. This isn't a conditional district, so is this even required? Let me ask that.
What is a non-residential building?
Yeah, okay, so it's, non-residential or any other building in a conditional district, is that what that says?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what that says.
Okay, so it's a non-residential, so that's the reason we're looking at it.
Yes.
Right. Rohit, I'm gonna ask this question, just so I can be clear, because again, I didn't have to interpret this to mean, um, and, and no offense, Kelly, but I did not interpret this to mean like handicap railing, or window types, or, um, specific grass, that sort of thing, and I could be wrong, but those are areas where I never interpreted this ordinance to, to read specifically that finite detail. Is there anything in here that may say, you know, railing? I think that we, we clarified the window types are not here, but like hand railing, for instance.
Christina, I, I don't wanna be misunderstood, like, we'll approve whatever we're supposed to, like, we just don't understand exactly what it is, like, what is the interpretation of these ordinances? We're happy, whatever it is, present it to us, they'll say yea or nay, but we just didn't know exactly what, what it was we're supposed to be approving.
No, no, I'm not, I totally understand, and I agree with you too, I don't either, and the way that I've interpreted it, it's really kind of high level detail, and I could be wrong. Um, I don't know if this ordinance had the back of my hand, unfortunately.
And I think the, the, I think the confusion comes with some of the parts of the elevation that, uh, some of the planning board members were asking for. Uh, well, I looked through this, what is it that you're supposed to review, and thought that I, thought that this, uh, plan didn't include everything. I do understand that there was something that needed to be corrected, but I do feel like the submission included everything. And so, we're looking, this, what you see on the screen is the entire, um, no, this is the entire section on building plan. We have the site data, scale, floor plans, color, uh, color elevations, and they don't really say, you know, the railing. Um, that, I mean, they say fixtures, but, um, I don't know, I don't know if that really includes rail, and it doesn't, it doesn't really say window types either. Um, and, and, and the, the, just the high level of interpretation of the design review board, to me, was that you didn't really even need this either, construction plan level of detail, uh, just kind of a sketch plan level of detail, but with the building, and the site, and the landscaping, and the signage too. I think, uh, if there, since there are, there are gonna be signs, um, originally we submitted it with no signs, um, but.
Well, I think this is an interesting position, because if you, as a planner, do not think that this should be reviewed, and then you say that this should not be reviewed. I mean, somebody has to make a decision. If this is a vague, um, interpretation of the way we're supposed to review things, this is some time, this is somewhere where somebody has to say, we have to review it, and we don't have to review it, because we're just working in a circle here.
Right, and I check out, someone did make a good point, there are a lot of things that just need to be the way they are because of code, I think, uh, Mark said that. Um, and so, those things don't need to be reviewed.
Based off of what, what I've just heard, and I, and I don't have everything penciled out, I did have signs, handicap railing, decorative fencing, specific grass, window types and color, um, soft lighting, exterior fixtures and door types, is of all the things that were recommended per the discussion that we've just had. And based off of the review of what I see here, I've crossed everything out, except for grass and signs. Based off of what I perceive as the purview. Um, so Rohit, in looking at this, I think that you feel like we submitted a complete package to them, uh, in terms of what was submitted for consideration. I do know we knew before we went into this that signs were gonna be something that we didn't ask for tonight, uh, because we weren't ready to have that reviewed. So, aside from that, I personally feel like we've submitted everything that we were supposed to, now, you could feel differently based off of this conversation, but the thing that I looked at this ordinance and interpreted, and the level of detail that's been provided, is what we thought met the ordinance.
In, in, in trying to look at this, it looks like it was a basic high level review of, of the site plan and the, the elevations, is that correct? Colors and elevations.
Yeah, that's how I see it as well.
Boy. I don't see it that way, guys. I'm telling you, I've been in other meetings where we were coming over, uh, structures and colors and, you know, I, I don't see, I don't think it's a 10,000 square foot unit, but.
I think this, this is a little bit different when you were reviewing the Marvin Gardens originally, like, when it was up for, the, the zoning district was up for design, that really had to go all the way down to the minute level, because that was an individual conditional district, and you were deciding what would be allowed at every level. Whereas, this is the design review for a residential zone property. Um, it would be, um, really hard on, I think, everyone if we had to go down to that level for everything that required DRB review, review in a normal zoning.
Hi, what is, what is really concerning to me, and, and I, I get that this is like, you know, it's like approving something for family, like, it's an internal thing, but if we do this this way, the way you guys are, are suggesting, at this high level detail, and then the next person comes in that wants to put a commercial building, or whatever it is in this new district that we're creating, and this is not acceptable, do you know what I mean? Like, I want to know what that fixture looks like. Because if it's gonna go in our little, you know, Main Street area, like, and, and I'd love to hear, you know, anyone from the, from the strategic planning committee who's, who's on this call. We want to control everything, that's what was, that's what was kind of pitched to us, like, if we do this, the zoning, we will control down to the, you know, to the detail, well, is this building not in that same district and area? Because we could be setting a bad precedent.
Yeah, I don't think we want to control every single building that's being built down to the light fixture in that commercial district. I think that's, uh, I think that's going too far. Um, I think we're trying to get a look, but I don't think we're trying to control every single little tiny detail.
Teeny, teeny tiny, but, but there is, there is, the way this was pitched to us about this district and, and, it was gonna be a very detailed plan, only certain things were gonna be allowed, and that was all gonna be in zoning ordinances, so.
Kelly, that, that district does not exist yet. Right this moment, uh, this, this property is done residential, uh, uh, someone correct me, is done residential, and, uh, government, or what institutional, uh, institutional uses are allowed in residential zoning.
I get your point, John, that's a good point, but I, you're right, it has not been approved yet, but.
Uh, if I may add, that, uh, that, the level of detail that you're looking for goes back to the reason why you looked at that level of detail in Marvin Gardens. At that point, you were creating a zoning district, and when this heritage district comes around, you will again be creating a zoning district, and you will be looking at very specific allowances of what is allowed, um, even though as detailed, or little detail as you want, and what's allowed, um, you know, depending on what you want to do, uh, the village, at the government, but, um, that's not really applicable here, like, the, the, and, uh, if we look at, uh, this village hall this way, then we can't look at heritage district properties, you know, the same way, it's not, it's not the right comparison to be having right now, because when you create the zoning district, you can look at whatever you want. It's that process of creating the zoning, whether you're, if you're a DRB, we might have to look at a higher level and ask what, you know, this is the entire building plan here, and I'm not seeing really construction level, uh, detail.
Rohit, Rohit, what you're saying is that this ordinance would not be used if we create a heritage district?
Right, right, we wouldn't be using this criteria to determine what goes in the district, or when the district is created, or what is allowed in. We would be doing a completely custom process, uh, for creating the zoning district. We have a strategic planning committee, that's not anywhere in the ordinance, because we're doing a custom process for that district.
So, won't, eventually, won't, won't this building eventually be in the heritage district, if there is a heritage district?
Right, but, uh, to John's point, it's not right now, so we're using the residential zoning, um, criteria and processes.
I get it, but you're, I mean, you're, you're setting a precedent where you're, you're gonna require people in the same district to do as I say, not as I did.
But, but heritage district, the heritage district may never happen, so we should just wait?
No, I'm not saying we wait, I'm saying, you know, if we, if we have reasonable belief that this building will be in the heritage district, then we should design it as if it is in the heritage district, that, but I see what you're saying on the other side. But I'm just saying, if, if it ever happens, we've just designed the building the way we want it to, not, not the way the heritage district has to. Like, governments have, 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 they're talking about themselves and rules all the time.
So, I feel like we're doing townships.
It's common here, I mean, it might be sad, but it's, it's true. It just is.
Yeah, but Michael, you can't.
Go ahead.
You, you can make the ordinance a little bit more specific when y'all create it, you could make it more than this, you could make it less than this. But this is not the criteria in which you would do the, the heritage district. And, and.
Go, I'm sorry.
Well, one thing I wanted to ask, Rohit, has, has the DRB board ever reviewed any type of development under this purview, per this ordinance? Because we have no other non-residential unit other than what's in an ICD, which is a completely different set of rules. So, we've never actually done anything within this ordinance, am I correct?
Um, as far as I know, we've only looked at ICDs using this ordinance.
So, this is the very first time that we have opened up this ordinance book and allowed John to go through and do this process, as you see here?
Not for the first time that we, um, approved.
Right, right.
I got forbidden, yeah, so it's not the first first time.
So, the, the precedent that y'all may be remembering is like Rohit said, based off of Marvin Gardens, which had a completely different set of rules.
And that was my point earlier, is that this is, this is confusing, so we just need guidance from Rohit on what it is, just tell us what we have to approve.
I agree, I mean, it feels like we're getting pushed back on things that we're requesting that seem kind of important, and we're being told, hey, that's not in your purview, don't worry about that, we're gonna pick it correctly. And that's fine, if that's the, if that's the position we want to take, I'm okay with it, but it's our job to ask, and it's our job to see if this is part of the purview, so if you don't want to provide those details, I'm totally fine with, we'll vote whatever way we're told to vote, according to what we're supposed to vote on.
Yeah, I would, I think I would tend to agree with Christina on her, um, kind of crossing out of what you guys requested. Um, just because, I mean, everything is in too detailed, and, uh, you can, I guess you could see it when the construction plans were submitted to us, but, um, other than the signs, which we, like we said, we didn't intend on submitting for approval today, but can do it later, um, everything else is, um, a little too detailed.
But I will say, just like with any other applicant, you're more than welcome to say, no, we would like to see more detail. Um, I, I just personally think that we provided exactly what the ordinance states. So, it's really up for you all to, to discuss, not to, you know, us any different from any other applicant, but that's, that's how I see the ordinance, as, as being written and submitted, just as what we have given to you all tonight for consideration.
I, I guess hindsight's, Rohit, maybe we should have gone over, since we've never done it before, should have gone over the ordinance in somewhat detail before we started, and this was before the last meeting, even. But, you know, in, you know, in looking at the ordinance now, I'm sort of with you, that other than maybe signage, we've, we've gotten everything that's necessarily required under this zoning require, under this zoning classification, this use, and, you know, this ordinance.
I, I still think, I, I would actually like to see what the screening is gonna look like, will it be white? Whatever is required by law for the handicap railing? What type of railing, and what color are you guys planning on painting it? Uh, those are all design elements, so, you know, whether it spells it out in here or not, it makes a difference when you're looking at the building.
So, do you guys wanna take, do you guys wanna take, as a planning board, take a vote on if you want to see more, or that you're recommending to the council to take this back and get all this stuff done, or do you wanna say, uh, take a vote on, um, basically, because I, I, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Christina, I don't think, or can you take what we have, other than what they've set aside? And can we move forward on our end while they're, or, and, and they can, the planning board can take a vote on this, if they want to get into the details, and, and with all fairness, I'm, I'm okay with that. That's not like I'm saying, in fact, um, if, if that's what you got, like, would like to see more details, so be it. Um, and we can just move forward that way and stuff, because it, it does seem like we're going around in circles, and I'm not sure, Christina, that, with what they have set aside, that is, is not clear, that we can move forward at this point.
We're going out for a pre-bid and, a construction pre-bid meeting on the 22nd of February. So, we plan to have all construction documents in hand by the middle of February. I don't know when the next planning board meeting is, but, yeah, we can't move forward with any construction documents until we have approval of conceptual plans. Um, so, we, we were seeking tonight to wrap up the, the, the construction conceptual plan, so that we can move forward with those specific construction documents, the, as, as discussed in the meeting.
And, and I'm, and I'm saying. For clarification, the, the pre-bid, uh, that you're talking about, is this gonna be a detailed bid from a contractor? Or is this a preliminary bid for a higher level, uh, you know, for the construction, without getting into the nitty gritty details?
It is a very detailed bid.
Okay.
It's not really.
So, then they really do need every little detail that they need to do by that, by that meeting, so that this, so the contractors have air shake in trying to bid this building all the way down to the lay grass.
Right.
Okay.
And if you bring those documents to the February 16th planning board meeting, and, um, you'll have the level, you'll have a much more level of detail, and then the planning board can look at it.
But that leaves no time for, for us to, that leaves no time for us to make any changes, I mean, I'm not going without a final document.
Go ahead, Paul.
Roh, Rohit, can I, can I ask a question, because I, I am a little confused now, I mean, I, I really admit that from the beginning of this, I, I kind of thought we were in the, the mode of, um, the, the Publix thinking, right? Let's look at the lights, let's look at the parking lot, let's look at the trees, let's look at, but now I think I've been awakened to the idea that, well, this is a little different, um. So, what I really want to understand is, if I were to stand here and say, no, I want to, I think shutters need to be on that building, I, I'm gonna insist on it. Do I have the authority, so to speak, to do that, or is that merely something I can suggest, and if the applicant's interested, they can do it, or refuse, or? Do you understand what I'm trying to get at? With, with the, with Publix, I think I was able to say, no, 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 your lights have to be green and they have to point down, because we have the theoretical authority to write the rules as we chose. Here, I don't think we have that authority, right? If, if the applicant comes in and says, no, I'll put the lights in that are legally required, and that's it, then, then we're done, right?
See, there were, there were.
You hear that?
Yeah, yes, if there were, I was gonna do this, sorry, there were a few different questions, and all different answers. Um, whatever is within the design review's purview. Whatever is within the design review's purview, you can definitely make a vote and require a developer to change something about an aesthetic feature before either approval. But then there are other features that aren't in the design, like area of review that you wouldn't be able to do that. Whereas in, like I said before, in the public's, the public's was an individual conditional district where you were writing the rules at that time. So that's what makes that different to this.
But to his point, if they wanted shutters, but shutters are not on the ordinance, can he request us to have shutters? And if so, based off of what interpretation of that ordinance? Because as I read it today, I wouldn't think that he could request shutters. But it is a design element that brings up a good question.
I mean, again, I could certainly request it and I'm thinking that the applicant then could consider it. But if they say no, getting the applicant happens to be the villain. They said no, then what?
I think this cooks down. Are you looking for design, is the must, are you looking for us to go, yes, this fits the rules as they're written?
Sorry, I mean, in the ordinance, it says that the design review board reviews elements of the facade. So I would say that shutters would fall under that.
And fair enough. Normally, I think what we would do here is we would make recommendations to council and then council would decide, look, the applicant says they're not putting up shutters, we're okay with that. Or they'd say, no, the applicant has to put up shutters. But what's, you know, causing us a little bit, at least causing me a little bit of confusion, is the applicant is the, it is the council.
But Paul, that could work to our advantage, because now we don't have to, we're not like this third person that we're going to the, I mean, they are the ones. So if they haven't put on shutters, we can infer they don't want shutters. I mean.
So what I'm sort of getting at here is now bigger picture, what we've been discussing tonight is, we said we'd like to see the lights and so on, but if at the end of the day, we say, no, I want lights that have this downfall and they can't be more next percent and if the council says no, then they just move on.
I think at that point, it's not what the council wants or doesn't, but since this is a by right development with the design review component to it, the applicant would be able to do anything that is allowed in your, like.
So I'm trying to move this along a little bit by saying, we've looked at the plan. We've obviously made some comments, some views, some suggestions about quality, change this, change that. But at the end of the day, the applicant kind of has the right to do what they want. So doesn't that enable us to say, look, we've made 10 suggestions, we're happy if you come back to us with your plan later after you've put together your, your building proposal or whatever term you used for that? But kind of haven't we had our say is really what I'm getting at.
I would say, not really, because the design review or approval is a required part of any development that requires design review board. So you have the right to make a motion to ask that the applicant changes something and then have to do that as part of their approval.
Quite frankly, I don't think we're there yet. Based on what I've seen so far, there's a lot of questions, Paul, to your point, that there could be things as a design review board. You want the certain things that you want and they're not listed in here, which means we can't have, really go out to bid for it. So until we get that information and we tie all that stuff down and clean this all up and have something for you, it's going to be hard to move on for a bid purpose.
That's definitely true. To get a reliable bid, that you're not going to get change order to death, you have to do all these details. I can, we talked about railing tonight. I can just tell you, you can get railing on that building anywhere from $55 a foot to $250, depending on how fancy and what material and all that, and it'll all be within code. But you've got to decide what you want, have them put that into the bid documents. But then I think you just start, listen, this is what we chose. It's as long as it looks generally the facade, the design, you know, the look and feel. And I would think that's, you say, we would go, yeah, that's certainly within that style of construction, right? I mean, that's all the real, we would just affirm or not affirm that it's within the general, the general concept of what's going on. Am I correct? That's the purpose of this board?
And Mark and Mayor, we will have those construction documents with that detail before we go out to bid. So that's, we're not submitting a blind bid, having to go back and do change order to this. We will have that information. We just don't have it tonight because it feel that it wasn't part of the design review purview.
Well, and Mark, my question is this, is would it really be expected that the person putting out the bid would know what kind of railing they would want for something like this? Wouldn't it be logical that the builder is going to put in the $55 a foot stuff?
No way. No, 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 that's purely the architect and the engineer to do that, purely.
Okay, that level of detail is going to be.
The builder makes no decisions. The builder looks at the documents and does what the documents tell him. Period. Christina, why isn't, I mean, do you need the D R B due before you go out to bid? Why can't you start to go out to bid without our approval?
You need an approved document to get, to get that, to get that, to do a small talk, right?
For you to go out to bid, you need, I mean, young people come with, before us and they already have a bid on things? I mean, it seems like they would. You don't need the bid.
Just like you all changed, you know, suggested changes at the last meeting in terms of the site layout, you know, you flipped the plan, you put in some ramps. And those are areas that we have to have some of that so solidified before we can go out to bid.
Some of the changes that you made and requested in the last meeting, you know, were really major changes. And I think that really does fall under the purview of the design review board in my opinion. So those things, no, would have to be, like Christina said, kind of ironed out before you go to bid. Otherwise, you're making large changes after you.
Well, I get that. I think we've made those decisions. I think we're well past that. Now we're on minor details. You know, we're talking about, you know, railings and lighting and stuff. We're not changing the building anymore. So I think you have everything, the changes that the design review board might make would be very minor, if at all, from what you said to going out to bid.
As far as that goes, when you go to bid, can you just cap a certain, to Mark's point, you go $55 to $250 a foot? Let's say, you know, we set a cap on, you know, $80 a square foot and you pitch from everything from there after the bid. I mean, is that something that we want to try to do is just kind of set some limits for the bidding process and then go back and find some details? Because we do have to kind of fit in a budget here and, you know, we don't want to spend $250 a foot of railing. I don't think, I don't think that we're really that, you know, pretentious that we want to have that kind of expense in our village hall. So maybe looking.
To that point, that's what I'm sort of, I'm struggling with is if I'm sitting here and I'm being, yeah, what kind of railing I want? Of course I'm going to say I want the $250 a foot railing. It probably looks nice for the $60 a foot railing. You just can't do that though. I mean, to stay in budget, you got to know what the big picture looks.
And to that point, that's exactly how we would do it, is we would have a cap and we would come back out there and we would have a selection of three or four different items. I mean, even to the point of color of carpet, texture of carpet, tiles, raw paper, if there's any of that. We don't have any information right now either, so they give us a range as to what they will allow within the bid and we come back later and choose amongst a couple of different things.
If we were to vote to approve, let's say hypothetically, what happens next? Like what would allow to happen that can't happen until we do this?
Well, if y'all were to make a motion tonight, I would expect an approval on everything except for the signs. And in that way, we would go forward with the architect to finalize all the construction documents to get all the detail as we've discussed. We would go out to bids as we intend to do, come back, get those bids. I wouldn't think that we would have any additional approval from you all except for the signs when we were ready for that. Unless y'all make some conditions on additional approval.
Well, I think that what I'm hearing overall from different pieces of the group, and I've been, you know, I've been a subcontractor, built quite a few buildings. There's certain detail level that has to only, can only be known once the final construction drawings are drawn and approved. And it feels like to me, we're at that place, like if that's at the 100 yards down the field, we're supposed to be here at about 80 yards down the field and saying, all of this looks and feels about like what the Marvin Heritage District should look like, in my opinion, on this lot. And if that's our purview, to wear the term out even worse, then I'm comfortable with that. And I'm going to trust that, you know, the lighting will be within code and it'll look good and there's going to be a good railing that is within code and will look good. I mean, I'm fine with all that. I mean, I don't need to micromanage and touch every one of those details. If that's what the design review board is supposed to do, as long as you tell me that's what I'm supposed to do, like I've not seen anything here that makes me say, stop, this is a crazy idea proceeding this project. Are there some details that need to be worked out? Yes, there are. But there always is and those are not, you know, we're not building booster rockets here. We're designing landscaping and lights and, you know, some railings. So if we're supposed to be like, you know, 200 feet off the ground and not a grand level, then I'm comfortable with. If we're supposed to be saying that's a great looking light post or it isn't, then I'm not there. So you tell me what I'm supposed to be voting on. How good the light posts look or the fact that you've accounted for one and it'll be there?
I really do think that the parking lot lighting is going to be a staff level analysis.
I use that as one example. I'm not talking about the lighting specifically. I'm just talking about the, any, call it any detail.
Right.
The type of grass, the where that plan is, what, you know, what type of flower that plant, you know what I mean, right?
Right. The flowers that it does, it does say in the D R B ordinance that you look at, which is why that need to be provided, like the specific species of plants. But that's, I think you've basically nailed it there, which is that, you know, we're not creating a zoning district here with this review. We're just looking at the feeling of the architecture and seeing that, you know, does the flow of pedestrian traffic work right? And you've done largely that at the previous meeting and now you're kind of looking at the results of your recommendations and of, you know, like you said, are there finer details to be worked out? Yes, but I don't think that's the purview of the design review board.
So, but Mark, I'll just amplify a little bit of what you're saying. In the normal context, right? The applicant just wants to get through this process and if we don't say what kind of lights they want or they need, they're going to put in what is legally required, right? Here, we're talking about village council is sort of, is the applicant and if they want our input on what kind of lights should be put in, well, then by all means, we're willing to give it. So again, it might be a little bit of circular process because the village is the applicant as opposed to some other applicant.
Yeah, so I would say if they wanted us to decide whether that's the right light pole, they would have given us a light pole to look at. Like, and in fact, the public's like you, Paul, I go to the public's like you, like, public's did give us, like, we talked about what type of hardy plank and what texture and where it stopped and that was our job then. I just don't feel like that's what we're being asked to do, like, here. And I didn't know that at the start of this meeting, but I'm starting to get through listening with you. We're not supposed to be chiming in on how each detail looks. We're supposed to say, is this in general, the type of feel and the traffic flow and the pedestrian flow and the, you know, the general lines of the building and the general materials? If that's what this, if that's what the job of this board is, then I'm comfortable voting right now. If the job of this board is to be more detailed than that, then I'm not comfortable voting right now. So.
Well, I don't see the requirement for that level of detail in that ordinance that we, that Rohit had up.
I do.
And, you know, and I think that's what you said, isn't it, Mark? That now you don't.
I could have totally guided you there, John, if you could restate that.
I mean, I don't see, you know, the level of detail requirement required for this zoning, you know, district, this, this use, you know, et cetera, is leaned out for the design review board. I don't see that level of detail in the ordinance requirement.
Yeah, I don't think the ordinance requires us to look at that level of detail. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what I see.
And that's the way I'm seeing it too. I'm feeling like I need to reprogram, like Paul said earlier, I need to reprogram what I was thinking about I was trying to do and then move away from that level of detail and back it down and say, that's a, that's a really good place. That building should be faced that way, giving that lot which should face this road and that stuff should be over there. And, you know, like, you know, that's a good place for the parking lot, you know, all that stuff. Like, I feel like I have enough information to vote that I think it looks good. And if that's where you're going to build it, I think you've done a good job designing it and you can micro detail it down to shutters and railing and light pole pipes without my input. Because you're, as long as you're following the code of Marvin, who you represent, then it's just a matter of opinion. It's a style opinion, which I'm not sure, if you want to speak that level, let's do that level. But, you know, go get the carpet selection, go get the paint colors tab, show us them, let's argue about them. You know, give me the sample, the grass, we can argue about all that, but if that's not what we're here to do, let's, you know, just attempt to recognize that we're supposed to do a lesser thing than that.
The only concern I have, and Dr. Melinda, I'll get to you in a second there, I saw you raise your hand, is my concern is we go out to bid, Mark, and what is Christina's parameters? We're saying not to exceed 250. So then when we get the bids back, one A B C company has the bid at not to exceed 250 and then the other one has, you know, per square foot, whatever it is, then the other one doesn't look at it like that, so we're comparing fair bids. So to some extent, I think as a design review board, we do need to get down to those details about it. Because I'd like to hear the comments about what direction we want to go on that. So that's where I'm concerned.
But there's one way to do this. You need to go make, you need to go get an architect and engineer to go to that level of detail and come back with those drawings. Because we can't do that for you with these drawings.
I think, if we want that level, you know, of detail, then we'll have to change the ordinance. You know, because ordinance doesn't require that, the design review board for this particular application to, you know, to get into that level of detail.
Right, and I don't think it's our way.
Yeah, and Mayor and everyone else just say, oh, well, we have a 100, 200 page bid document that goes into all of that specification as to how the bids are supposed to be submitted so that we can compare bids equally and people are submitting their bids amongst, all of them. There's a document that outlines exactly how it's supposed to be detailed. They would all be the same.
And a builder cannot cut cost corners by choosing a different design, as we mentioned.
I would like to make a motion for a vote, people voting whether they think they have enough information to vote tonight. I'm serious. I'm dead serious. I want to make a motion. I want people to vote. Do you think you have enough information to make a vote tonight?
Before you get to that, I see, Dr. Melinda, you had a comment.
Yeah, Melinda wanted to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And she.
I've just been listening because, and I think that I may be in a benefit here of not having been part of the public's conversations in terms of actually being on the board, just watching as a community member. And when I was looking at the plans tonight that have been presented as opposed to what we saw right during our meeting, a couple of weeks ago, we decided we needed to have this meeting. I'm thrilled that what we were discussing has been turned around, right? And like the big things that we were discussing, if that's the level, right, Mark, I think to your point, then we've accomplished, right, what we were discussing, right? Which was to make sure that we have, you know, I think Kelly, to your point, that we had easier access into the building for people. And I think Paul and Mike, like we were discussing, like there's no reason for somebody in Wilshire to go all the way around to the other end of the building if they're trying to see somebody. And so I think that I appreciate council hearing us on that because those were, we were adamant, right, about those things. For me, if we're still at that level, again, having not been involved, except for like conversations about signs on the. for like conversations about signs on the sides of the gas stations, et cetera, and that's starting to get in the weeds, and I'm feeling, you know, I'm understanding that. Um, but for tonight's meeting, for me, my self-concern, right, even if we're at that fifty thousand foot, two hundred foot, whatever foot view you want to call it, is with regards to the, where the trash can is and if it does abut the porch, or does it not abut the porch, right? So big picture, right, looking at from those two hundred feet, if that's what we're supposed to look at, I can't vote yes, because I don't think about that garbage can should be next to a porch in Marvin, right? I've lived here since nineteen ninety-two, that doesn't work for me. You don't put garbage cans next to porches. So that would be my concern, right? For the rest of it, I mean, I don't know if y'all see my house, I'm up on a hill, we all have bushes, I can't keep it alive. I'm not worried about that part. Y'all figure it out. If it grows, Andy, you say we need to change something about that, cool, change it. Like, I'm all for that. But the rest of it, if we're at the two hundred foot level, that's my concern. Yeah, I will vote that we need to have that addressed, have a better feel for that, and then we can go forward. Aside from that, that's all I got.
Well, regarding, you know, where that, that, that screening is, I don't believe that that colored elevation is correct. Am I correct in that assumption, Christina and Rohit? The black and white elevation is the correct today elevation. It shows the recess. You know, the porch does not go all the way across the building, you know, in that black and white elevation. It only goes in that center section, and then it, it, you know, it recesses back again. So I don't think that's...
Which elevation are you looking at, John? Because there are other elevations that disagree with you, so...
Well, you don't have the, the elevations that you got previously were not the, the most current one that, that Rohit pulled up earlier.
But that's, and that's an issue. Like, if we're supposed to be voting on something, we need the actual documents that we're supposed to be voting on. Like, we can't just have people say, "Oh, it'll be like this." Like, that's not how this works. So I have the...
I, I think you guys are a little confused on the elevations, okay? So when the building was flipped, those elevations were flipped as well. So the, the wider front porch is on the parking lot side of the building. The narrower front porch is on the street-facing side of the building, where they were inverted before. So you do have a very wide porch facing the parking lot, and then you have the narrower porch facing Newtown Road. And that will be at ground level because there is a hybrid floor system on this building because of the elevations on the site, and it's gonna save us some money. The portion of the side towards the road is going to be a concrete slab. The side towards the parking lot will be on a crawl space. The crawl space is where they're gonna want to run a lot of their utility stuff, so the air conditioning units being on that side of the building is going to be what they're gonna want to do. They can be hidden behind shrubs and such, and you'll never even know they're there. As far as that utility corral, it's about as far away from everybody's sight line as possible, from what we can figure out. Uh, council discussed that, uh, in quite, quite a bit, and that was the best place we could come up with. Um, it'll be totally enclosed with a corral. It'll be as, as far out of sight and out of mind as possible. Without putting it in woods, I don't see another place that is any better for it.
And that's, that's not actually what we're, we're talking, I mean, we, we get what you guys are saying, but our job is to look at the plans. We don't have accurate plans to vote on, but we totally get the, the logic, we hear what you're saying, but what you're saying doesn't match the plans that we were given. And so if, if, if this was like an outside person coming in, we would say, "We vote yes, on the condition that the plans are corrected and that the, you know, it is definitely not bumping it up against the porch." Do you know what I mean? I, I'm ready to say that right now, but like, I want to make sure that it is not reflect what we actually see in the paperwork we were given, because what we, what we're seeing, what we were given is not okay. So...
Okay, let me make one point of clarification. Those plans were actually just changed based off of the conversations that we had at the last council meeting, which was last Thursday, I believe, last Tuesday or Thursday. So we didn't have those plans to send to you all when that was discussed. They actually just got back in our hands today as been revised based off of the conversations that, um, council recommended. So y'all didn't have those because they were unavailable. So Kelly, is that, did I hear you make a motion? I heard a motion. Now here, I have a motion. Kelly?
There are other issues. I mean, like, I, I would be okay with moving forward if, if I knew that the, the HVAC systems, all that stuff, that, that we actually knew what the screening was, because that hasn't really, there's a, there's a picture of it, but that was just what he picked, right? That no one on the council has actually said, "Yes, that's the screening we want." That's a design element. And if, to make sure that area is recessed back and that it does not abut the porch.
Listen, we've been at this...
I would be happy to move forward.
We've been at this for three hours, and I think we've, we've figured out that there's a lot of missing pieces here. We're not sure if we're supposed to, you know, vote on the land post or if we're not supposed to vote on land posts. For me, Mark brought it up before, I'm not ready to vote on this. This, there's just, this is not, this is, there's too many loose ends here for me to vote, because I'm not sure what, you know, what we're saying is going to happen is gonna happen. Show it to us, and then we'll vote on it. We, we can't say, "Well, the site plan's wrong, and it's gonna get fixed and everything." I need to see that stuff. I need to see that it is correct, and land post, that we're gonna try to put a land post, and you put an ugly land post. I think the design reviews board is to review the design of things. You know, we're supposed to see what is going up. So if, 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 Mark, if you wanted that informal poll, I'm not ready to vote on this, and if we do vote, I vote no. Well, that's not the vote I was looking for, but thank you for your honesty. Now, here's the danger. So they go back and they do all these detailed drawings, and we get the architect and the engineer, they go crazy, and they design every curlicue on the rail and every plant, and then we start going, "Well, wait a minute, why do the curlicues go to the right instead of left?" You know, we gotta agree not to do that. Like, we gotta agree that if it, you know what I mean? Like, there's a, there's a certain point where we gotta stop ourselves from over critiquing style of the...
There's also a certain point where, like, the railing needs to at least exist in the plan. Right? Right now, it's not even there.
I, I didn't, but I just said, when they do one that's in their budget, and say they land on the eighty-two dollar foot, then we need to go, that looks, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Part of the plan!
We all have to agree, like, we can't do the thing, "Well, what else could you get for eighty-two dollars a foot? Did you look at the tubular, or did you only do the, you know, the flat bar?" You know, you can't, we gotta, at some point, decide what level are involved, like, maybe that's, I mean, at some point, hopefully we'll be prepared to say, "Well, that's not maybe the way I would have done it," but yeah, it certainly fits that style of architecture and, you know, this community. I mean, I think because, then we'll just be spending money and time, you know, the architects and engineers will be going, "Yeah, but I don't hope we sit here and argue about every little detail, because then they get to redraw the plans."
I think it's clear, though, that we're not doing super detailed work. I mean, like, I think that has been now made clear, but there is a difference between commenting on design element and then the element actually existing in the plan, so...
I believe.
You know, I, I really would have liked to have gotten the plans, even this morning, to look at, you know, before the meeting. Um, I, I don't, I don't think we're gonna detail it to that, but it, it still needs to be in there.
No, I, I was saying, I was saying, I think we just should agree now. Like, I'm fine joining the group saying, "I don't, I don't see enough here in good conscious saying, 'Yeah, I think this is great to build it.'" I, I'm probably not there myself, but I also, you know, know myself and the history of this board is what, how published and things. We can also, I think we just gotta recognize that when we do get those drawings, we gotta make sure, unless something screams, "This is insane," that we'll go along with the, our client is basically the council, who's hired an architect and engineer to design what they want, and that we just have to say, "It fits within the design guidance that we've given along the way, and yes, let's go with this."
Mark, I agree with you there. Uh, and back to, when do we, Rohit, Christina, whoever, when do we have to give, you know, in the, in the timeline of all this stuff? When do we have to give this, you know, put our stamp on it from a design review board?
Tonight.
Uh, you, you, Christina, you said that you are going, should have all of the final drawings from the architect and engineer by February fifteen or sixteen or something, because that's our next meeting. And you don't have to have that stamp before you go out the bid, do you? Because I, I think everybody, I hope, sounds like everybody is sort of in agreement with the, the stuff we've been talking about sounds okay now, subject to getting it down on paper, so that we can see the final one.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing that legally says I have to have y'all's blessing before we go out the bid. Now, obviously, it would be stupid for me to go out the bid and we're not to the point of approval that we need to be at, but if conceptually you guys feel like you're okay with what's presented tonight minus, you know, some more detail on railing, um, revised landscape that shows the fencing type signage, then I, you know, I can still pull the trigger on the, the bidding, and y'all can, you know, make an approval at your next meeting.
Yeah, I would, you could.
Does that sound reasonable there to, to the board? Are, are we in agreement with the concept right now that we beat for three hours, as Michael said, uh, so they can finalize their working drawings to go bid?
John, I mean, I said that earlier. I think we're, we're so close. We're not, we're not changing the building. We're on really minor things, and I think that, that there's no reason you shouldn't go with your pre-construction bid, because nothing that we're talking about tonight is gonna move the dial that much, it's gonna change much of, as the price goes. But that doesn't mean we don't want to see it. But that's your choice to go with, and I think it's a good choice to go with your bid, because what we're talking about tonight, tonight is not gonna move the needle very much.
And, and I think we discussed some things that we need to see, that, you know, you, you know, Rohit or Christina or, you know, the, you know, they, they need to, to get for us, or for, for the village in general.
So let me make sure I'm understanding correctly exactly what y'all want to see, though. Um, and, and, and we've had through this like a bunch of times, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. The signage, obviously, is one. The handicap railing, and the revised landscape that includes the fencing for the garbage. Is that all?
Well, and like I said, I think, you know, that includes making sure that we've got the correct elevation and, and screening fence in the right place, et cetera, et cetera, so that, you know, it's all, you know, correct, instead of, "Well, that's not quite right."
Christina, I want to see one thing. I want to see an elevation that shows me where the roads are and what that, not where I can see through the fence and see the air conditioning's behind it. I want to see what the fence looks like, because I'm not gonna see what's behind it. I'm gonna see a fence, and it's gonna be where some of the building would have been if that fence wasn't there. So I want to see that, and then I'll go, "Yeah, that looks good from the road, and whatever's behind it is behind it."
Christina, colors, colors of railing and screening.
And if it's further off to the right and recessed, let me see that. I mean, I, it just, it sounds right, and it sounds like it's there for the right reasons, like it's the best logical place, and as long as it's not, and Rohit, you mentioned that there's no walkway going by it, there's no, like, you know, no traffic-y area over there, it's just sort of off in the corner, uh, away from the parking lot, okay, that all makes sense to me. Let's just see it and stamp it, and let's go, build it, let's have it, let's start having government meetings again.
Yeah, get, you know, get finalized, you know.
I think that's the one thing that I saw. Like, I, I agree with, uh, Dr. Melinda said, like, you know, if you're gonna stick, you're gonna stick something to the garbage right next to the front door, let's depict it right and make sure we remember, like, what it's really gonna look like, because it looks pretty silly right now. So Rohit, is this something that we can pick up, uh, at our next planning board meeting and act as a design review to go over this thing? So I mean, we won't need council again, but we can pick up right where we left off. Hopefully the plans will be corrected by then?
Yes, that's true. Um, you can act as the design review board at the beginning of the meeting for this item, and then go along with the rest of the planning.
Is everybody all right with that? I am, as long as they go with the pre-bid, because you're right, Michael, what we might see, it's not gonna, it might, it might affect some little, you know, non, uh, non-financial change order of some sort, you know, which is fine, that's construction. Well, let's not... I mean, anything, I mean, anything we've said tonight or anything we'll do in the future will affect that to a, to a known degree.
That's what we're trying to do, is stay on, on schedule, I think, so, um, I think you guys, uh, you guys have valid points, and I do, I do want to see you guys give us some feedback on the detail, but, uh, you know, getting this bid done in a timely manner is, is important to keep this thing on schedule.
And if we could, if, if, I agree with you, Andy, I didn't want to step on, you had something else you were gonna say?
No, not that.
Okay, I'm just trying to wrap this thing up, is what I'm hearing is, I think, we at least need somebody who wants to take a stab at the motion on the planning board side to get us moving on with approval of the overall bid, understanding that you guys are gonna come back at your next planning board meeting, maybe talk about, a little bit about the details, because I think, quite frankly, council wants to hear that too, and get some feedback on that as we're, but we can at least move the ball forward. So if someone wants to take a stab at that, or am I jumping ahead to some...
I don't think we do vote tonight. The vote is on the fifteenth, yeah, the vote's on the fifteenth.
You don't need to vote tonight. Okay, you don't need to vote tonight. Okay.
Yeah, because I think all we can say is, the concept sounds good.
Yeah.
Right. Then I, then if that's the case, then I make a motion that we follow exactly what was just described by Mayor Joe, and I move to adjourn the meeting.
Can I just say really quickly, like, I, I wish that we had known what our actual purview was before we had wait, I mean, I feel like we wasted a lot of time tonight, and I, I wish we had...
On that, and Rohit, what I, what I, what I ask, I mean, is if you can, if you can break down the design review's job, um, and email it to every single one here, because I'll take blame for that, because, you know, we, we were kind of caught off guard with exactly what we, and I would challenge everybody to review the document before we get to our next planning board, so we know exactly what we're after here. I amend the motion to include Michael's comments. Andy, can I get a second?
Hold on. That's not a valid motion.
Lots of you.
The chairman's already been called, who seconded it.
Hold on, hold on. Not valid, not valid for the record.
A favor.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on, John. I'm following the clerk's lead here, saying, well, something was not a valid motion? Nothing was stated, you can't just say the motion, then everything everybody just said. That's not a motion. You, you can, you can...
We're trying to adjourn.
And hold on one second. Christina, it looks like you want to say something. Can you chime in real quick before anything goes to a motion? I'm on the edge of my seat. I can't hear you. You need, um...
Christina, you're on mute, you're on mute, Christina.
Sorry. I think, I think Mark was making the motion that the, the board is okay with the conceptual plan to move forward, and that they would receive additional information to have final approval at the next meeting, and he can concur if that was the motion or not.
I concur.
And Melinda seconded. So we have one, the first vote is, we're gonna vote on that.
Can we restate it one more time?
Please restate it.
Uh, planning board is, is okay with the conceptual plan as presented, and they will have final approval or consideration at their next meeting, something like that.
And Melinda was the second.
Yes.
Okay.
Question, does that mean we can use what's out there now to start the bidding process?
My motion, my motion was for you guys to take the information that we, the feedback we've given, complete the construction documents with the level of detail needed to get a proper, accurate bid, and do not stop that process of moving forward with that, which I assume means a pre-construction meeting, because the contractors themselves are gonna bring up all kinds of detailed questions that will affect the final bid documents, which has been both part of the process. So I would definitely, that, that was the intention of my mo-motion, is to continue as different, an accurate, detailed set of bid documents that can lead to the project, of which we will have a chance to review and comment on before a contract is issued for breaking ground and moving forward with construction. All right, I think I'd, I'd rather make that a statement rather than a motion. I mean, there's no need to put on that, they know what they, I don't think a motion is necessary. We, we just voted. We, we just voted. I, I make a motion to withdraw my pardon. Exactly.
Okay, hold on. So hold on, hold on, guys. This is getting, this is getting really technical. I have to get this in my mind. Austin, his head's spinning three sixty here. So we, we are not doing a motion on planning board, is that correct? Okay.
No motions, Joe.
Okay, so no motions.
We had a motion to approve it, you know, that we, so that you have something. We, we're, it's not final approval, but it's, conceptually, we like what we see.
I don't think you need a motion for that. Okay.
Need a motion.
Christina, right? Christina doesn't need anything to keep going. So there's, there's no motion needed. We just will need to agree that we'll make final decisions on the fifteenth.
Yeah, Christina.
We'll see that.
Okay. I was gonna say, thumbs up, Christina, that you got what you needed for tonight to move forward. That was, that was a sideways thumb, by the way.
But I make a motion to adjourn.
We need a motion from both boards to adjourn, if we're gonna do that, by the way.
Boo. Upset remarks for the planning board?
Motion to adjourn the council meeting.
Further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.